Like to call the meeting to order? Like to ask Chief Polino to lead us in the pleasurable legions? Thank you, Chief Polino. 1.3 Approval Agenda. Will move? To move the second or do any changes? Seeing none, vote please. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
The motion passed. Section 2 Special Presentation and Recognition. 2.1 Link Learning Gold Pathway Recognition. The Board of Education wishes to recognize Curtis Middle School's STEM pathways for earning this prestigious designation as a Link Learning Gold Pathway.
Good evening. My name is Mary Rhone Goodwin, and I am the Director of Communications and Community Relations. For tonight's special presentation, the Board of Education will recognize Curtis Middle School and SBCUSD's team of dedicated school nurses. Before I introduce our award recipients, I'd like to invite our board members and Superintendent Ariano to make their way to the front of the dais at this time. Executive Cabinet, would you please make your way along the ramp? As our team takes their places, I'd like to share that tonight's honorees are being recognized as part of the Board of Education's desire to spotlight SBCUSD at our very best. With that in mind, let us begin by highlighting Curtis Middle School, which was awarded Gold Certification Status by Link Learning on April 9th for its innovated STEM pathway. This is a testament to the dedication, hard work, and commitment to excellence demonstrated by Principal Mr. Guillermo Guerrero. Vice Princip- Thank you. Vice Principal Sarah Gap and Denisha Culversen and STEM teacher/STEM program specialist Chris Petricione in providing supportive and inclusive learning environments for all students. I now invite Principal Guerrero to come forward to receive a special certificate for Curtis Middle School. Dr. Alan Cave, if you'd like to join them for a photo, you may. Curtis is the very first SBCUSD middle school and only the second middle school in the entire state of California to earn this designation and serves as a model for career-connected learning, industry partner engagement, and hands-on integrated projects for middle school students. Congratulations, Principal Guerrero, and to all of the students and staff at Curtis Middle School for shining so bright and serving as a model of educational excellence. Let's recognize Curtis Middle School and their gold-certified team with another round of applause. The Board of Education would like to take the opportunity to recognize the district's team of highly skilled and dedicated nurses that serve our students with the highest level of care, compassion, and professionalism. Honorees, when your name is called, would you please come forward by walking down the ramp to my left where you see my team member with their hand raised? You'll be greeted by Superintendent Mr. Mauricio Ariano, the Board of Education, and your principal once you arrive to the front of the dais. Please pause at the gold plate cover at the center of the floor to have your photo taken before using the walkway to my right to return to your seat. Audience, please put your hands together as we welcome our first honoree, Chelsea Bartlett. Our next honoree is Brandy Bennett. Tia Brooks? Our next honoree is Tia Brooks. Next honoree is Christina Brower. Our next honoree is Sylvia Coleman. Please help me welcome Tammy De Bellis. Audience, please welcome Pasha Dorso. Next, we have Andrina Gallardo. Help me welcome Maria Garcia. Congratulations to Shandra Henson. Our next honoree is Wendy Huang. Look at Wendy's shoes. Make sure you get those shoes, Karina. Our next honoree is Sandra Kaiser. Congratulations to Nicole Lang. Audience, please help me welcome Sharon Lipp. Congratulations to Lynn Massey. Please help me welcome Rodrigo Morales. Welcome to Blanca Moreno. Please help me welcome Stella Norris. Audience, please help me by welcoming Kanako Watanabi.
You know, some years ago, when we had budget cuts throughout the state, we had a list of items to cut, and a lot of districts were cutting nurses. And our board chose not to cut nurses because we knew the value of having nurses in our district. And since then, we've added to the nursing population, which is not the norm for districts across the state. But we realized it was a priority and made sure that we funded nurses. And it turned out to be one of the best things we ever did. You know, I don't get a lot of calls from parents, but calls that I do get are parents that are concerned about the wellness of their kids, and their kids have specific medical problems that need to be addressed by nurses. It is a good feeling for me to be able to make a phone call and say, "What school actually has a nurse on site?" Because that's what parents are concerned about. Because you truly are saving lives. A lot of times, it's a situation of life and death. And even beyond that, just giving a parent a peace of mind is a big deal. So I just want to personally say on behalf of the whole board, really truly do appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
2.3 District English Learner Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Board. At this time, we would like to present our DILAC president, Ms. Rodolfina Gamino, to give the presentation from the DILAC board. Thank you, Ms. Gamino. You do have the report in front of you in English and Spanish.
Hola, buenas tardes. ¿Cómo están todos? Buenas tardes. Ah, mi nombre es Rodolfina Gamino. Soy la actual y la próximamente la saliente presidenta del Comité DILAC, aquí presente.
Hello, good afternoon. I am Rodolfina, and I am the acting chair of DILAC here with you today, this evening.
Muy pronto, saliente presidente. Aquí está detrás mi equipo.
And outgoing president pretty soon. So right behind me, you see my team.
Yo sé que es un poquito tarde, pero es mi primer reporte. Esperemos que todo salga bien.
I know it's a little bit late. It's my first report, but let's hope everything comes out well.
Ya que entramos de un... apenas soy una de las que entró después de una pandemia, y quiero mostrar lo que soy yo.
Well, being that I just was assigned right after a pandemic, so I also want to show what I am capable of.
Hoy quiero hablar sobre los logros del Comité DILAC.
Today, I want to talk about all of the achievements for DILAC.
Apoyo del Superintendente Ariano a la Mesa Directiva.
The support of the Superintendent Ariano to our executive board.
En reunión DILAC híbridas después de COVID.
Our hybrid meetings of DILAC after COVID.
Asistencia a los miembros DILAC en las conferencias CAVE, La Cosecha, CAVE Anaheim, CAVE Riverside.
The assistance for members of DILAC in the conferences for CAVE, La Cosecha, CAVE Anaheim, and CAVE Riverside.
DILAC compartió mucha información para nuestros padres y a la comunidad.
DILAC shared a lot of information for our parents and for the community.
Éxito con el apoyo a los padres a través del Comité DILAC.
Success for the parents and support through the DILAC committee.
Aumento de reclasificación que cumplieron con los requisitos del estado.
Being able to have increases in reclassification which met the requirements of the state.
Reconocimiento a los estudiantes bilingües.
And recognizing our bilingual students.
Capacitación a maestros y directores.
Trainings for teachers and principals.
Apoyo para los programas duales.
And support for our dual immersion programs.
Involucramiento de nuevos padres.
And involvement of new parents.
Oportunidades de trabajo para alumnos universitarios.
Opportunities of work for our university students.
Gracias para eso, porque es muy importante.
Thank you for that. It's really important.
Ahora quiero dar algunas sugerencias a la Mesa Directiva.
And now I would like to give some suggestions to our executive board.
Tener más programas, celebraciones, y reconocimientos para todos los aprendices de inglés.
To have more programs, celebrations, recognitions for all of our English learning programs.
Sobre todo de todas las ethnicidades.
And overall all ethnicities.
Continuar apoyando a los programas duales.
Continue to support our dual programs, our dual immersion programs.
Continuar con el apoyo a los padres-aprendices de inglés a conferencias CAVE.
To be able to support the parents that are English learners for the CAVE conferences.
Para que tengan mayor conocimiento de lo que es la educación bilingüe.
So that they are more aware and conscious of the bilingual education.
Continuar el nivel de comunicación regular.
To continue our regular communication levels.
Con el nuevo Comité DILAC.
With our new committee, our DILAC committee.
Y con el superintendente.
And with the superintendent.
Seguir trabajando arduamente con los directores de programas multilingües.
To continue working tirelessly with our directors of the programs, the multilingual programs.
El señor Ojeda y el señor Acosta aquí presentes.
With Mr. Ojeda and Mr. Acosta who are here.
Apoyo para mejor servicio a los padres en las escuelas.
To support for better services for parents in schools.
Continuar apoyando en los eventos de reclasificación.
Continuing to support these events for reclassification.
Seguimiento de las reuniones del Comité DILAC con la Mesa Directiva.
Follow-up with our DILAC meetings with the executive board.
Continuación de visitas de la Mesa Directiva y visitar programas duales.
To continue visiting our executive board and also our dual immersion programs.
Bueno, escuelas con programas duales.
Well, the schools with our dual immersion programs.
Entrenamiento a los padres de DILAC y DILAC.
Trainings for the parents of DILAC and DILAC.
Promover más la importancia del involucramiento familiar.
To be able to promote more of that importance for that involvement, parent and family involvement.
Tener la presencia de la Mesa Directiva en las reuniones DILAC.
To have our executive board present in our DILAC meetings.
Todos están invitados a participar con nosotros.
Everyone is invited to participate with us.
Yo sé que han estado algunos presentes y otros su tiempo no se los permite, pero los queremos ver ahí.
I know that some have been present, others, your time doesn't permit, but we do want to see you there.
Y darle seguimiento a las visitas a las escuelas, que es muy importante para nosotros los padres.
And to continue following up with those school visits because it is extremely important for us, the parents.
Y quiero mayor apoyo para los padres en los idiomas para que ellos involucren, mejoren las escuelas.
And I would like some deep support for the parents in their languages so they can get involved in the schools.
Para el apoyo de todos sus estudiantes.
For the support of all of your students.
Y no me queda más que de darle las gracias.
And I have nothing left to say but thank you.
Y quiero seguir trabajando con ustedes porque yo no me voy.
And I want to continue working with you all because I'm not leaving anywhere.
Aquí me van a ver sentados mes tras mes.
You'll see me sitting here month after month.
Y me van a tener más detrás de ustedes.
And you'll be... I'll be chasing you.
Y eso es todo, y recuerden que juntos hacemos la unidad.
And that's it, and remember, united, we are the strength.
Si una pieza falta en el rompecabezas, no estamos completos.
If one piece is missing in our puzzle, then we're not complete.
Es todo. Gracias.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Medina.
Sí, nomás quería decirles muchas gracias. Just wanted to say thank you so much por su dedicación a nuestros estudiantes. La verdad es necesario, so muchas gracias por venir. I wanted to say thank you so much for your support and coming down and really speaking on the issues is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vios.
Yo también quería darle las gracias. I wanted also thank you. Este, yo sé que el tiempo que ustedes pasan en estas juntas, en cosas del distrito, no son pagadas, ¿verdad? Y requiere mucho tiempo y requiere mucho compromiso, y no cualquier persona lo puede hacer. So I know that, you know, your involvement and your participation in different district events and things like that, it's not a paid position and it requires a lot of commitment. And so I just want to say thank you. Truly, I wish I could have been there more often. But I'm a little new in my career, so that took a lot of time out of my day. Pero muchísimas gracias, de verdad. Y qué bueno que nos va a seguir acompañando. Thank you.
Ms. Alexander.
First, I'll apologize. I will not be able to speak in Spanish, but I wanted to say thank you for taking on such a challenging task during COVID to keep DILAC going and coming in and sharing with us your accomplishments and working with the community and the parents and always keeping the kids first. So we appreciate that, keeping focus on the scholars. And then in terms of just split your asking of the school board in terms of call to action, we received that, so thank you.
Ms. Husky.
Thank you. I also will not be able to address you in Spanish, which is to my great sadness because I should have been bilingual, but that's a whole nother story. I just want to say thank you for all your work. I've been to several DILAC meetings and I appreciate the times that I've been able to attend. You run a wonderful meeting. There's always good parent participation, which I appreciate. Being able to see our parental involvement, I think that's a testament to the work that DILAC does and that commitment. I also hear what you're saying. There's several things on there that I made notes about that I really wanted to see. I attended CAVE for years as a teacher and a teacher leader, and I know the importance and the value of that conference and the education that our parents get. And I like the idea especially of expanding who attends to have more understanding of the benefit for particularly dual immersion for all of our students, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Grande.
Este año, voy a ser el prometor, voy a ser la lucha, a visitarlos.
I haven't attended a meeting in a long time, but I will attend your next meeting. I welcome your invitation. I do think it's important for board members to show up, so I will be there, okay? Mr. Ariano.
You President Tillman. First, I'll say in English then in Spanish. First of all, I want to give Ms. Gamino a huge thank you. She has done a great job, an elegant job, a classy job, being the president of DILAC, and we all appreciate your leadership. And if you don't know, she's also very funny. So she makes the meetings very funny, very light and needed, so I do appreciate her. And just in Spanish, señora Gamino, le quiero dar las gracias porque usted ha hecho buen trabajo este año y le agradecemos todo el esfuerzo. Y tú lo haces porque tienes corazón para nuestros niños y para nuestra comunidad, entonces muchas gracias. And Mr. Ojeda, Mr. Acosta, I was wondering if maybe one of you could introduce who else is here with us? And I know we have our future president as well, so maybe it'd be nice to end it by introducing our other members. Thank you.
Sure. We've got with us our vice president for this last year, and this is Roxana Cervantes. Would you stand up? And then we have our parliamentarian, who's also our new president as well.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Romero y pues soy la futura presidenta de DILAC. Entonces estoy aquí muy agradecida y también comprometida para seguir trabajando con ustedes. Y como dijo mi compañera, ustedes son parte del... rompecabezas y me gustaría también seguirlos invitando.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Romero. I am the future president of DILAC here. And as my colleague said, you are part of that puzzle piece. So we...
and as my colleague said, you are part of that puzzle piece, so we are going to be here working collectively and asking for your support.
Y como siempre, la voz de los padres son para mí muy importantes porque yo sé que ellos me eligieron a mí, confían en mí y les agradezco y es por eso de que estoy aquí luchando con ellos.
And as I always say, our parents' voices are extremely important because they elected me, they trusted me, and I am here to represent and be their voice.
Pues también ustedes, gracias por todo su trabajo que han hecho y por estar con nosotros porque yo sé que sí nos escuchan.
And also to all of you, thank you for all of the work and for being here with us because I do know that you listen.
Muchas gracias y que Dios los bendiga y nos veremos pronto otra vez.
Thank you, God bless and we will see you soon, once again, thank you.
Point four. Resolution and recognition of Juneteenth Day, I'd like to ask Ms. Alexander to read that for us.
President Tillman. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest African-American holiday observance in the United States and whereas September 22nd, 1862, President Lincoln issued the celebrated Emancipation Proclamation and whereas prior to the end of Civil War on January 31st, 1865, Congress passed the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, which abolished slavery throughout the United States and its territories and whereas June 19th, 1865, is considered the date that the last slave in America was freed, almost two and a half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation and whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed into the law Bill Making Juneteenth National Independence Day a federal holiday and whereas in 2023, Governor Newsom officially recognized Juneteenth as a state holiday and a third Saturday in June of each year to be known as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, a day of observance. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes June 19th as Juneteenth National Independence Day and be it further resolved, the Board of Education recognizes the third Saturday in June of each year in Jan, in California as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, a day of observance that urges people across the state and nation to join celebrating Juneteenth as a day to honor and reflect on the significant role that African-Americans have played in history of the United States and how they have enriched society through their steadfast commitment to promoting freedom, brotherhood, unity, and equality, so move.
Move by Ms. Alexander and second by Ms. Abios, vote please.
I do want to note, can we start using enslaved versus the word slave in these resolutions as well?
Noted and thank you. Ms. Scott.
Aye. President Tillman.
Motion passed. Section five, closed session. No, it should be, sorry about that, I apologize, section three, public comments. Three point one, receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to adjust the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, program services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than thirty minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And our first public comment is Mr. Terry Boykins.
Thank you, President Tillman, I appreciate it. My name is Terry Boykins, Executive Director of Project Finding Chance. I just want to say thank you all for the support you've given us this past year, it's been without question a phenomenal experience watching the city of San Bernardino produce a Heisman Trophy winner and an international gold medalist in boxing, which has been an incredible journey, having come through a phenomenal training during COVID and having the dream to reach the Olympics, but option to go pro, which is another opportunity. And so Superintendent Ariano, I want to say thank you and Dr. Rodriguez for attending Terry's victory celebration. He enjoyed it, being able to see his educators come back and see him and surprising him knowing his favorite teacher was really kind of exciting. But you know, with the celebrations being gone, the individuals that are now young adults on their way, Project Finding Chance gets back to work with all the other scholars that are looking to do things and deal with things in their respective pursuit of education as well as their own family life. And Project Finding Chance wants to continue serving this community. And I know that Ms. Goodwin has some promo cards that we've had that is circulating throughout the city. We can now get back to working on what we believe, we understand a little bit, and that's working with kids that have been impacted by trauma. And so boxing is what we do, communities who we are, that's what we're going to do come the 10th of June. Project Finding Chance goes back to work. It's been nice creating Golden Glove champions and international boxing champions. But if you go to Ruben Campol's today and you notice that we've added something on that building and we work with Parks and Rec as well as the Campol's family, when you pull up to Ruben Campol's Community Center, you will see from Fourth Street, big words that says, "I am a champion." And that is what we want to make sure that each of those young people that come into that building, come into that property, they understand that yes, we do have international celebrities and athletes in there, but the reality of it is, we want them to know that they are a champion without a question. And the affirmations are all over the building, we want to make sure we do that. And this is the reason why, when the team was presenting the information about having a boxing camp, I wanted to make sure that not only were we focusing on the athletic proudness of some of these individuals, but we were dealing with some of the adverse childhood experiences that are encountered with these individuals. And as you'll notice that on the boxing camp flyer, it has for champions, individuals that will be athletes, but we also are going to make sure that our coaches are able to work with youth and train them in how to deal with some of their coping needs, their mental health issues. And so that is something, even tonight, I think there's like sixty parents on the call tonight, I'll be going to tonight on the Zoom call, getting ready, but this camp is not just for champions, but it's for trauma as well. And we will be talking about what we need to do to be more accountable. And then also with that, we're going to move right from the boxing camp into another program, which is called Chill the Violence. And you'll get a chance to know a little bit more about that and what Project Finding Chance is going to do to address some of the issues that are confronting juveniles with regards to influence of violence on the streets. And we do have a proactive approach with regards to our organization to engage youth. We think we have a vehicle that will basically appeal to them and we're going to use some of that influence to have conversations and get them the resources and the help and the intervention that's needed, so they do make it back to the next school year. Because if they do not make it past the summer, as you know, outside of after school, that's one of the most vulnerable times, is that gap in between being out of school and coming back to school. And we want to make sure that we're being responsible as an organization to participate in their successful return to school and on their way to graduation. The other part we're going to do, and I'll leave with this, is that in July, we know that a number of parents contact us wanting to know what do they do with their kids for July, if the summer school's out. Project Finding Chance has their enrichment program. We will be available to this community from eight-thirty in the morning to six o'clock in the evening to make sure that youth are able to involve in physical activity and fitness programs, enrichment programs. And I just confirmed yesterday that we will have meals to provide three times a day to every child that walks into that building. And so I just want to say with that, that's our agenda for the summer, we look forward to it, it'll be a busy summer and our objective is to help these kids, scholars, get back to school in August and ready to learn, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boykins, and thank you for the work that you are doing in our community. Me and Mr. Boykins go way back, we went to Cal State San Bernardino together. He was a member of Capa Apple Side Fraternity and Five Eight A Single Fraternity and actually went to school with his wife at Roosevelt and Arrow View and San Bernardino High School. And it's just amazing that you're doing this program. You know, Ian Franklin, who's in your program also, he and I met at a summer program, it was called SITA. We were both about fourteen years old and we worked together in that summer program and kept a relationship throughout the years. And he's been working diligently for over thirty or forty years in the community, helping our youth. So I can't thank you guys enough.
But then I want to say thank you, Danny, and you know, it's been great, you know, being a coed and having the collegiate experience and growing and seeing and the, you know, the staying put in the community has been really, you know, a humbling thing for me to experience. And so I'm looking forward to working with you and your board and the scholars and the parents that we get involved with to do more because I do know that if we can let these young people know that we believe in them, I think they will believe enough in this city to want to stay and make a difference. And so that's what we're going to be going to work on. And so I'm going to get on this parent call tonight, because they've been calling me all day, so I'm going to get a chance to get to the Zoom and want to say thank you all once again.
You know, the best thing on your flyer says thirty-five dollar early registration, May first to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. But there's an asterisk that says it does not apply to San Bernardino City Unified School District students.
That is correct.
And that's because of the partnership we have, you know, they're able to participate without having to pay the fee, and that's a big deal.
That's exactly right, with expanded learning, and I want to give a shout out to Ann Pearson, her team, and Tiffany, and Sean, and Laura, and Tina, which we have a chance to make sure that we don't put anything out unless they approve of it. And so that's the partnership, and I think that's the partnerships that we want to make sure this community understands that with all the things that you hear about San Bernardino, there are some very good things that are going on, there's some very good kids in this community, and I guarantee you that if we take care of them and treat them right, they will be back to treat this city right.
Thank you very much.
Next. We have Ms. Amy, I believe it's Aguirre, is that right?
Hi, good evening, my name is Dr. Amy Florence Aguirre. I am a graduate of San Bernardino City Unified School District. I attended from kindergarten at Urbida to Richardson Prep High for middle school and graduated from Cajon all the way back in two thousand and seven. I earned the recognition of valedictorian and I owe that all to the incredible teachers and mentors that have been by my side throughout the years at this school district. And I am very grateful for all the hard work that we do collaboratively as a team to make that happen. I was able to attend UC Riverside, I earned a Bachelor's of Science in Biochemistry. I then attended Loma Linda University School of Pharmacy. I graduated with my Doctorate of Pharmacy in two thousand and fifteen. I was more than happy to come back and serve my community as a teacher, right now as a CTE teacher at Curtis Middle School. I am very happy to see that our school was honored this evening with gold certification from Link2Learning, which is a just testament to all of the incredible work that we do as a team at our school site. I teach a medical pathway program, CTE program at Curtis Middle School. And as we're recognizing the nurses up here in our school district, I can only think about our kids, the kids that walk into my classroom every single day to learn about the medical field. I have the incredible opportunity and honor to guide these students to pursue a medical field-related career and encourage them and push them to exceed academically that will open up those doors for them to pursue those types of careers. So at my site, I am a demonstration teacher. I also have the opportunity to mentor other teachers. So I am trying my best to make sure that I am leaving a lasting impact not only on my students, but on my colleagues and other teachers as well. I am incredibly thankful for this board. This school board has allowed me to teach that class for the last three years. In two thousand and nineteen, my school was honored with the innovation grant, which totally remodeled that classroom in two thousand and nineteen. As we know, COVID kind of put a little halt on the construction to that. It was finished in two thousand and twenty-one, so this is the third year I've had the opportunity to use that classroom and I thank you guys for funding it. It was a fifty thousand dollar grant to make that happen, it's a beautiful classroom. So my concern is that I would like the program to continue. So I would just have the board consider to continue with the medical pathways program. As you can see, we just got gold certified for STEM and it just would be a loss to the students and the community to lose this type of program. All of my students are able to leave my class completely certified in CPR and first aid and they will save lives and have saved lives. So I would just ask the board to reconsider and make sure that we continue with these types of impactful, important, essential programs for our students and our community.
Did you hear that we're going to discontinue the program?
As far as I know, the program will not continue for next school year.
We're looking to it, thanks for coming out, really appreciate it. You said you have your PhD?
I have a Doctorate of Pharmacy, yes.
Well, you didn't write that on your name, so I, so you're Dr. Aguirre?
Dr. Aguirre, yes.
Well, thank you very much, we're looking to it because if it's a program that has participation, has been successful, I'm sure the board wants to see it continued, so we'll look into that, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Doris, Anthony Verros?
This button, okay. All right. So, good evening, everyone, my name is Doris Sante Verros and I'm the Chair of the Pharmacy Technology Program at San Bernardino Valley College. And just to piggyback on the speakers before me, you know, our program is an entry-level training program for pharmacy technicians and within the last few years, our program has been present in different high schools within your school district. So, you know, there is a great importance in medical pathways due to our labor workforce shortage. So I just, so I don't get off track, I just wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude for the continued partnership between our college and your district. We're honored to have our program hosted at San Gregonio, Cajon, and Pacific High Schools. It brings us an immense joy to see successful completion of our program by now two of your students. They graduated, we had one student graduate a couple of years ago with their pharmacy technician certificate and we had a student this past spring also graduate with their pharmacy technician certificate and now they've transferred to our school to continue their associate's degree. And we have more to set, to finish their certificate program by the end of this new school year. So these students, one of the courses that they're required to take is a clinical experience course where we place them in a pharmacy and they gain pharmacy workplace experience by working alongside pharmacy technicians and pharmacists for up to two hundred and forty hours. They both impressed our receptors beyond measure and they didn't believe me when I told them they were high school students. So they exhibited a lot of professionalism and maturity. So they exhibited a lot of professionalism and maturity for being high school seniors. So a little bit about our program. We're accredited by the American Society of Health System Pharmacists, and we rank higher than the national average in our national certification exam. I credit that to our amazing instructors who are working pharmacy technicians and pharmacists. They all believe knowledge is invaluable when teaching students about real-world scenarios and practical applications for their future pharmacy careers or any healthcare-related field that they choose to go in. In that way, we feel we are successful in training future pharmacy technicians to meet those local pharmacy technician shortages. So one thing that I wanted to mention that is particularly, you know, I'm very proud of, is witnessing student interest in the pre-pharmacist pathway at our college. We're thrilled about the educational pathways we offer from our associate's degree in pharmacy tech to the PharmD pathway in collaboration with Loma Linda University School of Pharmacy. So this educational journey has sparked a sense of motivation and empowerment within our students, especially within the Hispanic community, making higher education more attainable and enriching lives with transformative opportunities. In addition, we're also partnering with Loma Linda University School of Pharmacy to host a National Pharmacy Technology Day. So this October, historically, is Pharmacy Month. And we're inviting several different high schools to come onto our campus to participate in this Pharmacy Technology Day. And if any of you are available on October fifteenth, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to you. It's more geared towards a STEM fair for our students, kind of letting them know about different career paths that are available to them. So in closing, I just wanted to thank you for your unwavering support in nurturing these educational pathways that are shaping the future of our students.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you a question? You may not have the answer. But how do we advertise and recruit students to get into the program? Do you know?
So we go into other high schools, and usually it's during like career fair days or reaching out to students within different classrooms. Maybe it's like a medical pathway classroom or a class that's already, you know, kind of those CTE type of classrooms. And we present the information about our program. And we work with our CTE specialty instructors that are the designated representatives at each of the school. And we promote our program in that way. So the unique thing about our program, pharmacy tech versus any other pharmacy tech programs, is that we're a, we're not kind of like a formal program where you have to apply to. The students are registered through dual enrollment, so they're earning college credits as they're taking our courses. So by taking this pharmacy tech certificate, it actually gets them a third of the way done with their associate's career or associate's of science degree, and then that they can apply the prerequisites for pharmacy school. So it's possible to do an associate's degree to PharmD pathway, which is one of the first in our areas.
Thank you. And it's not a Gen Nice, so I'm not going to elaborate, but we have the budget presentation. And I think during that presentation, we can discuss ways that we can ensure that we have enough students in these programs that will give us the funding to continue. Because you guys have invested so much time and effort, there's no way we're going to take a chance on losing this. So we'll find a solution. But we can't talk about it here. We'll talk about it when we get to the budget. Next up to speak is Ms. Medina. Got a question?
Definitely. Thank you so much for speaking. So I do, maybe as a clarification, and this can also go back to the school district. Just really knowing what the entry level of students who graduate from these programs, what is their pay as they're entering into these programs? And, you know, in the career pathway, once they graduate or get the certificate. So I know that our district is moving into maybe providing some information. That would be good for me to know.
I know with the new laws that came out for like the fast food workers, so entry level usually meant that when a technician was hired on, you know, entry level may start eighteen, nineteen dollars per hour in a retail setting. In a hospital setting, it might be a little bit higher because they're required to take a national certification exam. But with the new laws that have passed, there's also been additional laws. Forgive me because I don't know the exact name, but it's like SB two eight five or SB two nine five, something around there. Where, because the new pay rate has affected food, like, you know, fast food workers, it is also affecting healthcare workers where if they're below that minimum wage, they will also be raising the wage to meet that new requirement or go above. But it's something that's done over a period of time, I think, between now and three years.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Next is Mr. Omar Castro.
Good evening, board members. My name is Omar Castro, long-term resident in the area. I'm actually a proud alumni of San Bernardino Valley College. Just wanted to start off that way. And I work very closely with Ms. Antiveros. And I've been working at Valley College for ten years now. And two years, I was actually invited to work in the program, more in the division area. It's called the Health Life Science, but more to support the pharmacy technology program. And the reason for that is I've actually been charged by the district level to actually do special studies in our area, which basically the range is between Fontana, Rialto, Colton, San Bernardino, Redlands, and Yucapá to really find the need. And so when I was invited to be a part of the team, I didn't even hesitate. I said, you know, when can I start? So I started two summers ago, and I saw some areas where I felt like there was a need. So we have been at Pacific High School where the program is in place for dual enrollment. And I wanted to send a shout out to Ms. Lindsay. She's such a firecracker out at that campus. Just her numbers alone, I'm sure you guys know, but to do enrollment through San Bernardino Valley College, there's recorded about twelve hundred students this semester. A minimum of fifty percent of the students came from that school. And so we're very proud to work with them. But one of the areas that I found the need was to really expand and open up to opportunities within your district. And so I've been working very closely with Mr. Mormon at San Gregonio High School. We went live this fiscal year. And just to share with you, we're very mindful as to how many courses we can actually have at a high school. We've never had more than two going live in the first semester. And because of the need, not just there, but also the support from also the families, we went live with two schools. So normally in a course, we have about thirty to thirty-six students, and we had nearly about seventy-five. This fiscal year, we had about a hundred and twenty. At, we found that there's also a need on the other side of the district. And so we also are live at Cajon High School. Cajon High School, this fiscal year, recorded about a hundred and fifty students. So ultimately, this fiscal year, we recorded over three hundred students from your district. And that's why we're here, more than anything, because we wanted to really thank the board, you guys, for your support, very strongly for your advocacy. But also the members at each respective school, starting from the front, from the principal to all the career specialists, because we really can't do it without them. But just to share with you through our budget, we have an instructor through our team, and he or she is paid to teach at that respective high school. And the course is live there once a week. It's after school. It's technically about two and a half hours or so. And each course is always filled. There's like not even enough room in there. And like Ms. Antiveros was sharing, we highlighted a student not so long ago that graduated in the program. But we're looking at the numbers now. We're actually looking at between twenty-five to twenty-eight students that are currently still in high school. They will continue, and they'll be recognized mid-May of next year. And so that's a huge jump. So we're really, really happy about that. Like Ms. Antiveros was sharing, our graduation rate is much, much larger. But just at your respective district, from all of the students that registered and completed a course, the retention is ninety-eight percent. And so we really look at nutrition. It's extremely important. From nearly our two hundred programs that we have, our respective college, we're the only program, not just there, but within our region, being Region Nine. And I pay attention to the other junior colleges throughout the, within our state, being that there's ten regions in our state. We're the only college that really focuses on retention. Because, so I go out there and I speak to the students. I help them with the whole process from A through Z. So when they're looking at someone through the supportive admissions, I'm your person. If they need someone for tutoring, I am your person. I respond within twenty-four hours. I can prove that to you. But that's the support that they're looking for, and so that's what they can expect. And so when I'm looking out, moving forward, my vision to continuously working with your district is visioning not what's coming forth the next fiscal year, but more two years. We know that time goes quickly. But we're really looking at hopefully getting your support with increasing more benefits at San Gregonio High School as we're looking at a five-year strategic plan. And so thank you for your support again, and I look forward to seeing you guys hopefully October fifteenth.
Thank you. And you know better than I do, that retention number is amazing. Because even at Valley College itself, the retention number is nowhere near that. So you're doing a great job, and we appreciate it. And our whole goal is to make our students as successful as possible. And I personally want our kids to outcompete every other district. So whatever we have to do to continue the success you're having, we're going to do that.
Thank you for that. And I wanted to share with you, so I got my bachelor's degree over ten years ago, and I believe very strongly in the program. I didn't want to sound like a salesperson, you know, we're not in the private sector and things like that. I wanted to make sure that I knew what I was talking about, you know, to our respective students. So I actually took the leap about three semesters ago, and I took the program myself. Passed a program because I thought it was only fair for them. And we're now seeing some of your students that are encouraging their parents. So we're now seeing residents in our area taking the program with them. So again, we wanted to thank you for your support, for Ms. Mary Ellen, also for being visible on our campus. I know that you're one of our alumni. Mr. Mauricio Arayano, I saw you there a couple of months ago. Ms. Myra Sabios for being in our opinion ceremony. And I'm looking out for you guys for an invitation. I can see some of you guys possibly being a keynote speaker and guest speakers at our next opinion ceremony. It's a really highlight to know that we anticipate over twenty-five students next year from your district that are going to graduate. So thank you for your support.
I'm also alumni, but before the heck, Peters, nineteen eighty-three, so they don't have any records of me.
Yeah, I remember meeting you for the first time at our Veterans Resource Center, and thank you for everything that you do in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Scott Wyatt as well. I've seen you there too as well. Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Davis.
Am I good? Okay, good. Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for the thirty minutes you're about to give me to talk right now. Thirty-five, thank you. My name is Willie Davis. I am the Associate Dean for Student Services at the Loma Linda University School of Pharmacy. And I want to tell you something here. We have been around for twenty-two years at our school, and we have been partners with this school district for the entire twenty-two years of this school. And you have been our partners. We have, is part of our DNA for us to be involved in the school system. And I'm going to bring things full circle. Dr. Agiri was my student. She is a product of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, and has gone back to give back to the school district. And that is really a microcosm of what we've tried to do with our school. We have been involved in the school district since day one. The work we've done with Curtis Middle School. Back in two thousand and twelve, Dr. Kay and I just saw each other for the first time in a while. In two thousand and twelve, my laboratory at the school, I'm a biochemist. My laboratory started teaching laboratory principles at Indian Springs High School to students. And we did that for a number of years. Today, we are still involved with the school district. It is important to us. Two years ago, our school became the first school of pharmacy in the United States designated as the Hispanic Center of Excellence in Pharmacy. We received a three-point-five million dollar grant from HERSA. The goal of that grant is to improve healthcare in this region. And I'll give you some numbers of what we're trying to do. This school, this region is well over fifty percent Hispanic and Latino. About eight percent of the healthcare providers in this region fall into that demographic. Our school received this grant because we have been doing a good job of training pharmacists like Dr. Agiri. And we've only graduated thirteen percent. Since the grant has started, we are now up to thirty-seven percent. Our last entering class was thirty-seven percent Hispanic. Most of those students came from this area. We are focused on improving healthcare in this area by providing pharmacists who can go out and serve an area that needs to be served and make a difference in healthcare. We cannot do that job without our partnerships with you. We are thankful for our partnership with San Bernardino Valley College. We teach, we don't teach, they teach three classes in our building with their students who become our students. So what we have done, we realized that if you keep looking in the same places for students that aren't there, you won't find them. So what we realized is we have to look for students where they are. And students from our district tend to stay, go to community colleges. And what we realized is you can do the prerequisites from pharmacy school without getting a bachelor's degree and move right into Loma Linda and be successful. This year, we will have one of our first graduates from San Bernardino Valley College in our program. We want to continue this partnership. It is important to us. It is important to this region. And we are committed to doing whatever we can to make this go. The people at San Bernardino Valley College are amazing. Amazing colleagues of ours. We are looking forward to what we can do together. Please, in October, come and join us. There are Pharmacy Month. It's going to be, it's going to be a show. It's going to be wonderful. We want to see, what we want to see is our first student from the high schools to enroll in our school after about two years after they finish high school. That's what we want to see. That's our vision. We're going to improve healthcare in this community, one student at a time, and it's because of our partnership with you. Thank you for this invitation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And you can count on us. We'll be working with you. It's a win-win for both of us.
Yes.
Like you said, our students benefit from it, but the community also.
Yes.
And so we'll make it happen. You have some comments from fellow board members, Ms. Sabios?
Yeah, so I mean, just in general, listening to all the speakers, I just want to say thank you so much for coming out and really, you know, making us aware of these opportunities and these programs. And, you know, I started to hear a little bit about pharmacy tech just recently. I mean, I didn't really know much about it. It sounds like it's a growing program. It's not as big as some of the other programs that we may have in the district, but I definitely want to make sure that we do show it some love and show it some support. And talk about partnerships, right? I mean, you have the school district and you have the community college, you know, us working. And then them, you working, Loma Linda working with them. And so it's such a beautiful streamline. And, you know, we're working with students in high school, but now we have, you know, a teacher from middle school, you know. In a couple, I don't know, board meetings, you know, back, we had, you know, discussed a little bit about, hey, how can we get them started, you know, from elementary? How can we get them exposed to some of these, you know, different areas and fields and STEM and, you know, technology and all these different things? So I really do hope that this pathway at Curtis Middle School is not going to be closing this medical pathway. Because it's a really good opportunity. I don't know what other middle school, you know, maybe there are other middle schools that have pathways. But even if we do medical pathways, even if we do or we don't, I think if the program is there and the program is thriving, you know, why get rid of? We do medical pathways, even if we do or we don't, um I think if the program is there and the program is thriving, you know, why get rid of it? Um I've heard a lot of great things too about the job outlook, you know, um like you're mentioning, so again. Supporting um pathways that are going to directly uh provide at the end a a a good. Job, even if it's just, you know, and uh um. Entry level, thank you, an entry level, you know, they may not stay there, and that's okay, but they need to be able to, you know, a lot of our kids. Um often don't go to college because they want to go to work, you know, like I just want to start making money, some of them have to. And so what better way to be able to say, hey, there there, here's this option. Um and you could do it while you're in high school, I love the fact that Valley is sending their instructors over to our campuses. And they are paying for it out of their pocket, so again, when I started to. To hear about little get bits and glimpses and pieces of the of this program, I was like, oh my gosh, can you guys come and share more? You know, before the board, and so I'm so glad that, you know, um you've joined us, and so anyway, thank you, I really do do hope that. We do take a closer look into it and continue to expand that middle school pathway, you know, and eventually. Start getting to to the elementaries as well, so thank you so much.
Can I share with you full circle how this works? Our students have gone to Amy's classroom for years, and they do presentations. Their students have actually done presentations in the community of the things they've learned in the program. So they have helped, they have helped teach their parents and other people in the community the things they've learned. It's a full, we're all one, it's one circle, we're just part of a big, a big, big uh process here.
Thank you, Mr. Husky.
They all stealing my thunder, but um first, thank you to everybody for your your presentation tonight. Um one of the things that I was thinking about, it was just like, you know, when we talk about it takes a village and I was to to raise our children and. I thinking about all the partners that we have that stepped up in the room tonight to talk about. How they wanted to support our our children and their success, our students for their futures. Um and I was also thinking about, you know, when we talk about pathways and pipelines and, you know, um you know, how uh uh you know. K twelve to college to career, and I was uh I didn't know as much about the pharmacy tech, I mean, I know what pharmacy techs are, and I know about pharmacists, but I didn't really understand. As much, I think, as some of my colleagues did about what we were doing with that. And just the idea that we our our um our our students from our middle schools. Can, you know, have a pathway to Loma Linda University, that they might not, you know, uh there's probably parents out there watching right now that didn't know that we have a pathway for them to get there. And that midpoint, at that pharmacy tech, they're that, they're gonna actually have something that could potentially, um you know. Talking about the work, that they'll be able to work and sustain themselves while they're continuing their career, so. I really appreciate you bringing this uh to our attention, um highlighting it for us. Um I appreciate that you're highlighting it for our community as well. Um and I'm, you know, hopeful that we can at some point have a little more discussion about, you know, how we can support this uh moving forward. Um and and do that, and I look forward, I look to see if I had anything on my calendar, October fifteenth, so I'm putting that on there. Miss Cunningham more information on the the on that. Um so that we can, we, you know, those of us that can attend, um uh Miss Cunningham would be the one to send that to for us, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That uh is the, that is all of the people providing public comment tonight, that takes the section. Four, public hearing, four-point-one, local control and accountability plan. This time, we'd like to open a public hearing for the local control and accountability plan. Are there any comments?
No comments.
Close the public hearing. I will now open a public hearing for our fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget. Is that here? No, it's not, I'm gonna do that later. So right now, we're at. Section five, closed session. Thank you. Like to call the meeting back to order. Action reported from closed session. Six-point-one. Educational services. Be resolved, the Board of Education's approved settlement agreement J H G twenty-three slash twenty-four dash oh four in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Board of Education authorizes the purchasing directive to sign all related documents, so moved.
Second.
Removed by me, uh me, Danny Tillman, and second by Dr. Wyatt, vote please. Motion carried, six-point-two. AC dash twenty-three slash twenty-four dash oh five. Be resolved, the Board of Education approved settlement agreement AC twenty-three slash twenty-four dash oh five. In the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, Board of Education authorized the purchasing director to sign all related documents, so moved. Removed by me and second by Dr. Wyatt, vote please. Motion passed, six-point-three, certified reassignment, HR certification twenty-three dash twenty-four dash forward. Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined the following certificate employee be given notice that he, she shall be released from assignment as a principal effective. At the end of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his/her credential authorizations. Effective at the beginning of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, and that the superintendent or his designee. Is hereby authorized to get written notice of this action pursuant to Education Code forty-four nine five one, so moved. Removed by me and second by Dr. Wyatt, vote please. Motion carried, six-point-four, expulsion of students, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel. Based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations. And orders the expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations. And compliance with Education Code section four-eight-nine-zero-zero. Four-four-one-nine-one-eight, four-six-six-three-seven-six, four-eight-two-one-one-five, four-four-zero-two-nine-six. And five-three-nine-three-one-one, so moved.
Second.
Removed by myself and second by Mrs. Husky. Vote please. Motion carried, six-point-five, recommendation for suspension or expulsion. Excluding mandatory offenses, but remanded to youth court or other means of correction, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings. Of facts of positive youth development, and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification number. As listed below and in accordance with the Board rules and regulations. And in compliance with Education Code section forty-eight-nine-zero-zero, four-six-five-four-four-eight. Moved by Mr. Husky and second by Mrs. Alexander, vote please. Motion carried. Six-point-six. Recommendation of suspension but deleted from student assertive discipline due to completion of youth court or due process error. The following students were recommended for suspense for suspension, but the suspension was deemed inappropriate based on the due process errors. And sufficient evidence and or the availability of other means of correction and compliance with Education Code section four-eight-nine-zero-zero. Therefore, although they were recommended for suspension, the suspension was reversed or modified. Four-six-one-one-eight-zero, forty-eight-four-six-zero-nine, four-eight-three-four-twenty-six, four-six-five-nine-three-three, and four-three-six-two-four-two.
Come in.
Moved by Mr. Husky and second by Mrs. Alexander, vote please. Motion carried, six-point-seven. Other closed session action, be resolved, the Board of Education. Accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to dismiss the following certificate employee from his/her employment with the district. HR cert twenty-three dash twenty-four dash nineteen dash E R. So moved.
Second.
Removed by myself and second by Dr. Wyatt, vote please. Motion carried, section seven, student board members. Uh seven-point-one, reports by student board members, Ms. Crystal Scott.
Hello, everyone, my name is Crystal Scott, and I am the African Native woman who is seventeen years old. And I graduated from Go Home High School. As a student board member, student leadership advisory councilor rep, and soon to be Swan debutante, district advisory councilor and parliamentarian. Uh I have to say, I'm very happy that I have the opportunity, and I'm very grateful that I'm here to be able to bless others with this position. And I'm so glad to be involved in uplifting over fifty thousand students in this school district. But not only have I involved myself in my community, but in my school as well. Sadly, this is my last meeting, and I want to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to have. This amazing opportunity to serve beside them and see what they do to make hope happen daily. I plan to attend RCC, study political science, and join their ASP group. Um their Yumodra program and their BSU, and maybe start a program where we focus on promoting wellness centers for students and teachers. After that, I will transfer to the university of my choice and continue thriving. Um if you would like to support me in my college journey, I have a QR code for the GoFundMe, and I can email that to you if you would like. Um I also want to congratulate all of our seniors who graduated. Congratulations, class of twenty-twenty-four, I'm so proud of us for surviving our twelve years since. I want to say thank you to the Board of Education, our director, our executives, superintendent. Our assistants and our staff for making this so easy, and I don't think we could have done this without you guys. And you put in so much work to help every single student here in the SBCUSD. And I want to say it's an honor to have worked with you all. Also, if you know of any paid internships this summer, please, please let me know immediately. I would love to gain more knowledge and experience this summer, and don't forget to vote for me in twenty-four to three for State Senator. Thank you, everyone, and have a blessed night.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott, and we're gonna miss you, it has been wonderful having you here. Uh you've done a great job and given us some great input, and we really do appreciate the work that you did as a student board member. I know you're gonna go and do great things, congratulations. Section eight, administrative reports, eight-point-one, local control of accountability plan.
Thank you, Board, good evening, President Tillman, Vice President Savios, um Superintendent Ariano, the rest of our board, cabinet. Um tonight, we are going to be presenting to you the LCAP um plan. This is the final presentation for the public hearing, and then I will be turning it over to Mr. Koenig, who will then be discussing the presentation. For the preliminary budget, so I'll go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Kimber Sargent today, and Dr. Will Greer is with her as well.
All right, good evening, thank you so much for having me, oh. I'll try that, is that better? Okay. Uh thank you to President Tillman, uh Superintendent Board and Cabinet Members. Um I am here today, again, this uh for our public hearing for the local control and accountability plan. Um as you know, this is sort of the culmination presentation um that has taken a journey beginning in October. Um with our presentations to our parent advisory and community groups. Uh gathering input to develop our plan for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Um I'm very honored to share here our time with Dr. Greer, who will be sharing some information. About a particular program that will be in our LCAP, this is a new requirement. Um so he'll be sharing some information as we get into the presentation. Um as an overview of our funding that's found within the local control and accountability plan. Um normally, this plan would contain our supplemental and concentration funds. That are generated by our low, our low-income English learner and foster youth students. Last year, uh we had a little bit more funding, so we are decreasing our funding by one-point-six million, but in our. Supplemental and concentration funding, you'll see that we are just over two-hundred-and-one million dollars. The percentage that we need to increase or improve services, these are services beyond what we provide for all of our students. Um is forty-two-point-five-nine-seven, that percentage is increasing along with the percentage of our unduplicated students. And that is a percentage of our low-income English learner and foster youth. The actions uh that are tied to our supplemental and concentration funds, you'll see in the presentation today, have that gold banner along the bottom. Uh to let you know that those actions will total up to two-hundred-and-one million. There are other budgets that are included in our LCAP for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um so these are not things that took away from other programs, but yet are added into our plan to give us a more comprehensive look. At the supports that we provide for our students, um beyond those that are in the supplemental and concentration budget. In total, for the twenty-four, twenty-five LCAP, you'll see an amount of funding that exceeds two-hundred-and-twenty-three million dollars. Uh there are a few new requirements, so as I get to those, I'll make sure to pause to share that new requirement and where that funding source comes from. Um as I stated, this is taking place um beginning in October with our parent advisory groups, over twenty-three meetings, we offer these meetings as a hybrid option. In um with English and Spanish interpretation. Um this included school board presentations with our annual update, which took place in January, our union partner collaboration. Uh district staff presentations, uh presentations to our parents and guardians, as well as our students with our student leadership. Um with Crystal Scott actually being one of our Slack um board members that serves on our DAC. As well as community members with our community meeting we held uh two this year. At each of those meetings, we offer an opportunity for questions and answers, any clarifications that they might have, as well as time for them to provide us input. Um with the direction of our superintendent, we incorporated thought exchange. As one of our platforms to gather input from our educational partners. Uh we had more than seven thousand participants in our thought exchanges over these twenty-three meetings. Those participants provided over seven thousand thoughts, it's an average of one per participant. Um and then once you provide the thought, you're able actually to rate what others have provided as a thought as well. Um it provides an open forum for uh the input, if you are. If you are participating in the thought exchange, you can see what everybody else is putting in in real time, and you're able to rate those thoughts on a scale of one star to five stars. And then it will show you the top themes that will come from your input. So you'll see that here in the graphic with the Wordle. These were the most common items that were provided as input related to our LCAP with a strong emphasis on our smaller class sizes, our instructional support and intervention, and having those supports located at the school sites. The goals that are associated with that supplemental and concentration funding with that gold banner are our three goals that we have. The goal number one has been incorporated with our SHINE's 2030 initiative of our superintendent. Goal number one is our high expectations for academics and innovation with equity and inclusion lens as a foundation to be college and career-ready. Goal number two, safe, secure, and attractive learning environments and facilities promoting nutrition, wellness, and mental health. And goal number three, involvement of students, families, communities, staff, and parents. For each of those goals, there are actions that are assigned to them to help us meet our objectives. For goal number one, you'll see that there's an investment of over one hundred and sixty million dollars. For goal number two, you'll see there's an investment of over thirty-six million dollars. And goal number three, an investment of nearly five million dollars. This, again, is just one of our budgets. I know Mr. Koenig and his team will be sharing our entire school budget, our LCAP supplemental and concentration. This is just one of our budgets and priorities that our board has had. So you'll see here a breakdown of our actions. These, again, are the gold banner actions that are contributing actions for low-income English learner and foster youth. You'll see on the table, on the slides, in the first column, the name. There is a shortened name within the template. The template was provided to you in a binder. I know you love binders. This one is tabbed for you. I did give you a table of contents to help you just navigate through it. And some of our new funding sources, I provided a special tab, so as we get to those points, if you want to flip to those, I'll give you a little reminder. But the details for each of the actions are also found within this plan. So on this slide, you'll see, for example, we had our DILAC members are here tonight to give you an update and share some of the things that they would like to see. Many of those events and many of those activities are funded with our supplemental and concentration funds. So those things that they're looking for under the direction of Mrs. Applegate will be utilizing our LCAP funds to support. The second column provides you the scope of where the action takes place. They are either LEA-wide, which means it's available throughout the district, school-wide, which means there are particular school sites that this action is targeting, or limited. And you'll see that in that last action on this slide for English learners. Limited means that it's for one of the student groups that are an unduplicated population, so this is only for our English learners. So that is what it means by limited. It's not in any way to exclude anybody. It's just the term within our LCAP. In the last column, you'll see the data that we use to identify our needs. So for our first one, advanced learner programs, it was our data for English learners, low-income, and foster youth. And you'll see the amount that's allocated for that action. Goal number, go to the next page. There we go. On the next page, one of the changes that you'll see in the 2425 plan is middle school support class teachers. This is based on input from our educational partners. Over the last two years, we have begun the implementation of the multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS. We began that with providing our school site somebody to oversee that process and oversee our intervention practices. We provided intervention staffing to build a learning center or a learning lab at our elementary level. And we are now, in this year, extending that up to the middle school level to provide them with teachers to specifically target the needs of the school and provide additional support classes for our students. So this is staffing that will be at our school. The setup is the same with the action title, scope, and then our unduplicated students. The remaining actions here, these actions are continuing from the previous school year. Anytime there's a change, I'll make sure to point those pieces out. You will see an increase in the transportation cost from last year of six million dollars. And that is the ending of our SR funding and picking this up here in our LCAP to support our students. On the next slide, you'll see there is a new action on the last row there, multi-tiered system of supports, teacher on special assignment. That's a whole math pool. We had input from our educational partners. They wanted to see specifically in the plan where we had that staffing at the school site to oversee intervention and ensuring that that was a district-wide initiative, so that was pulled out as a separate action. In the LCAP for 2324, it was in Action 19, and now it is set alone on its own, just to be clearer to our community. On the next slide, you'll see these actions are also continuing. We have a lot of strong support for our educational field trips. This comes not only from our community, but also from our school sites and our teachers. At the bottom, you'll see as we expand our program offerings at our school sites under our STEAM program. We had ten pilot schools in 2324. We are extending that now out to more schools. So each year adding little by little in a way that we're able to sustain and build practices that we can replicate throughout the district. So we started with ten in 2324, and we'll continue to add on to that next year. That's under the direction of Dr. Clyde. And so you'll see the investment there also increasing from last year to make sure that we are thinking of all of the pieces, the working pieces that it takes to integrate STEAM within the curriculum, as well as providing the materials that the students might need. So that will round out goal one. In goal two, you'll see, again, these are gold banner actions for English learner, low-income, and foster youth. Goal two centers a lot of our support from our student wellness and support services, our Swiss department. Last year in our LCAP, we split the actions up to provide clarity to the community and make it clear how we're supporting our wellness programs. And you'll see here that that is continuing, so all of the actions that we have here were actions in last year's plan that are continuing into 2425. On the next slide, you'll see right up at the top, we had a celebration of our registered nurses, and I agree with Mr. Tillman. They literally save lives, even personally for myself. They saved my life. And I was having an issue, and she said, "I think you should go to the emergency room," and it was something very serious. So I very much appreciate and connect with your comment that you made. You'll see here a continuation of our supports from Swiss, as well as programs, offering crossing guards. We've increased our crossing guards, in particular with the implementation of late start. With our ending times being very similar, there's an increased level of traffic. We also, under the direction of Mr. Vittier, have a process now for our community to ask for a traffic study if they feel like there's a very busy community, our intersection near the school. They're able to fill out a Google form on the website so that we can go out and take a look, but I know that's something he regularly monitors as well. And then at the bottom, you'll see a new action for student wellness and support services materials. Many of the areas under the Swiss department overlap, so there may be materials that are both for wellness and for mental health, both for mental health and counseling services. And before, each action had materials in it, so it was separated out as its own action since many of the items are interrelated. Again, just to provide clarity for our community and how we're supporting our students. This is one budget. Again, as a reminder, in our community meeting, we had questions around our community schools initiatives and whether we were going to apply for the grants. That would be additional funding that would further support our work towards providing mental health and wellness services for our students. And then on goal two, actions continued. You'll see here, these are all actions that are continuing with our student leadership advisory council on this action. This student leadership advisory is not only where we get our board members, but also our student representation on our district advisory council. We are expanding that. I know Dr. Rodriguez has shared, we had high school only, and then we invited in middle school, and we'll be looking to bring in our upper elementary as well. So that's an expanding program just to enhance the voice of our students and ensure that we are sharing with them information. I share the budget with them, just as I share it with the community. We ask for their input, just as we ask for it in our parent advisories as well. That will take us to goal number three. This is still under that golden banner of English learner, low-income, and foster youth. And this is our three actions. They are the same actions that we had last year. We are continuing to implement those actions. We have a lot of educational partner input and support, especially of the work of our family engagement services, our family engagement department with our parent volunteer workers, the workshops that they provide, and the support that they provide at our meetings, and helping our community to connect with resources and remove barriers so that they're able to not only participate in the education of their children, but now also we're bringing them on to the school sites as parent volunteer workers. We are continuing to increase our interpretation and translation services. As you heard, tonight, we had our interpreters here. We are continuing to increase that, making sure that we have adequate funding to replace equipment of our headphones and the tools that they need to be successful. And then lastly, for our targeted enrollment, ensuring that we are offering our signature programs, our bilingual programs, and making sure parents have access to support to use our ARES online portal. And that will round out our first three goals. Those three goals in total add up to the excess of the two hundred and one million, and that will transition us from what was traditionally in our LCAP. That would have been the end of our presentation. But there are some new funding sources, so I'm gonna go into those. Again, those new funding sources did not take away from any of our programs, but will complement those programs and allow us to expand some of those services. So I'm not sure if you want me to pause, Mr. Tillman, or you want me to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. So we'll take you into the next section in your binder. This is tabbed with a green tab. This is a new program that will begin in the 2425 school year called Equity Multiplier. This program originally started as an assembly bill, 2774, from Assemblywoman Weber, and that bill went all the way to the governor's desk and was vetoed with a promise to come back with a way to support our lowest-achieving students. That came out in this budget cycle as Equity Multiplier. The schools were identified by the California Department of Education based on demographics. So this was not an identification based on their California dashboard data. This was an identification based on the students that attend the schools. There were two areas that a school had to meet in order to be eligible. So of all of our schools, the schools that you see here, their school logo, in addition to ALC and Home and Hospital, these were the schools that met the two pieces of criteria. The first one is something called a non-stability rate. This is also known as mobility or transiency. It's the movement of our children. They take a cumulative enrollment of the school, so if a student is enrolled, even if it's just for one day, that will count in that cumulative enrollment, and they will count that through the entire school year. So the more movement there is in the school, the higher their non-stability rate is. You had to have a non-stability rate in excess of twenty-five percent. So these schools all have a non-stability rate that exceeds twenty-five percent. So that was the first piece. The second piece is the school had to have a socio-economically disadvantaged rate, or a free and reduced-priced meal is also a term for it, or low income could be a term for it, a rate greater than seventy percent. Now, the majority of our schools meet that seventy percent, but they did not meet the other piece, which was a non-stability. So these schools met both pieces. This is a totally separate funding source. That is thirteen point three million. These are school site allocations, so the school sites that you see listed here. The funding was based on the number of students that were enrolled at Seabeds last year. So some of our schools have a very high non-stability rate by the design of their program. A school like Sierra and San Andreas, they have every six weeks where they will have new students joining them. That causes them to have a very high non-stability rate. Their non-stability rate at San Andreas was over sixty-two percent, and you only had to be at twenty-five percent. So just by the simple design of the program that helped them in becoming eligible. They will select schools each year under this program. As it is designed right now, the funding is able to be spent over a three-year period. So there is a scenario where the schools you see listed here could be identified again in January of 2025 and receive another allocation. So they have three years to spend this thirteen point three million. Next year, they will identify schools. We will have another allocation, and that will have three years to spend down. Right now, this is an ongoing funding source, but the funding is considered one time, and you have three years to spend it. So hopefully, you're with me here. The schools that you see here, we met with to do a formal notification to make sure they understood how they were identified. The requirements under the program, they have to address all of the red areas on the California dashboard. So they were identified based on demographics, but they have to address their performance on the dashboard. So we made sure that they understood what the requirements were. We met with them a second time to do a pre-planning session. They had to complete their school plan for student achievement and write that plan out. And everything under this program, Equity Multiplier, is now on top of that in addition. It does have a supplement, not supplant, so we do need to make sure that these are new and additional, or we have what's in our SPSA, and it's more than that now. We have what's in our LCAP, and it's on top of that. It's another layer of support for these schools. So we met with them so that they would understand that they're adding a layer on. We looked at their data to ensure that they understood what areas they needed to address. They took that back to their school community to draft a plan. They drafted that plan, and it went through school site council as our parent representative community. And if they had English learners, for example, they would present it to their ELAC. Or if they had African-American students that they had to address, they would address it to their APAC if they had an APAC. Some of our schools did a coffee with the principal or just a general community meeting to make sure that their school community was aware of it. And each of the schools had a thought exchange that was set up, so we also gathered input through thought exchange for the Equity Multiplier program. So under that green tab, you're gonna see one goal for every single school. So San Andreas will have its own goal, its goal number four. And the actions underneath San Andreas is that plan that the school developed with their school community and input from their educational partners that are all supplemental programs for them. Their plan is to spend that money over the three-year period that they have. Anything in the first year that they don't spend will carry over to year two and would carry over then to year three. So each school has its own goal number and its own action plan. ALC and Home and Hospital, they don't have a logo. ALC, the principal of Virtual Academy also oversees our ALC program, so she led that process with ALC. So she led that process with ALC. Home and Hospital, we did in collaboration with our special education department to ensure that we were getting input from them. I also presented at the Community Advisory Council, the CAC, to ensure that I got input from those parents as well and how we can better support our home and hospital students, what services can we add to those schools. On the next slide, you'll see here the themes of the actions. What we were looking for are things that would help to address the areas that are red on their California dashboard and areas that would help to build sustainable practices. So you'll see for most of our schools, they built, they built up their intervention program and their professional development program. If they have that action in their Equity Multiplier plan, you'll see the school listed. So the first two have staffing that they are going to use from their normal allocation of teachers. They're going to use them to either provide support classes, or they're going to use them to provide coaching. As an example, at San Andreas, they have teachers who are highly skilled in areas that will teach for part of the school day and coach for part of the school day. So the schools that have the additional teachers or the academic coaches are our high schools, our secondary, because they had more funding. Their allocation was higher than what the elementary schools were. But you'll see intervention is a common theme for many of our Equity Multiplier schools, as well as professional development, tutoring and intervention, as well as providing some materials for these increased services that they'll be providing to the students at their school. Mr. Tillman, that is the second type of funding that's in the LCAP. If you want me to keep going, I can keep going on to the next one. Okay. So that'll take us to the next new requirement in our LCAP, which is differentiated assistance. Differentiated assistance is not a new program. The new requirement is to incorporate it within your LCAP and to gather educational partner input to develop an action plan to address the identification. The identification comes from an analysis of the California dashboard of our student groups. And these are our student group performance at the district level. In the past, we were in differentiated assistance, which is under the system of supports from the California Department of Education. We were identified for differentiated assistance for African-American students and students with disabilities. Because over a two-year period, their data was all in red or orange in one of the, at least one of the California dashboard indicators. We improved with our students with disabilities and they came out of differentiated assistance. Our action plan that we had in place led to improved outcomes for our students with disabilities. For this year, we were ident, or for 24, 25, it's, we're right in the middle of two years, so it's hard. In 24, 25, we were identified for differentiated assistance for African-American students, which means for two years on the California dashboard, they were either red or orange in these three indicators. So it's English Language Arts, Math, and Suspension. And these are district-wide, not individual school sites, district-wide. So the systems that we need to build would be to, to support district-wide initiatives. And I know our superintendent had, has shared this with our site leaders as a priority for us to address our African-American students. We didn't need the identification from the state for our board to know and our superintendent to know that this is a priority. These are things that we already had in action and we are already making strides towards. What this does do is help with the community feedback that we'd like to see a plan. We, we want to see something written out that shows what we're doing and the funding that we have associated with it. So I have my colleague here, Dr. Greer, who's going to share some of that work. As much of that work is started with his department and led under Mrs. Applegate with the support of the other directors in elementary and secondary. Really, all of us pulled together. He says, we need you, and, and we're there for him. So I'm going to turn it over to him to share about some of the actions that you'll see on the next page.
Thank you, Kimber. And thank you so much, Board President Tillman, Vice President Sabios, Mr. Ariano, our superintendent, all of our board members, our cabinet. I'm just really, really grateful, glad to be here, and just really excited about the support that we have. In fact, since we have been back with Mrs. Applegate, our Assistant Sub of their Services, just the capacity for the ETSA department and the work that we've been able to engage in this year and looking forward to next year, it's just been unprecedented. And so I'm just, I'm here truly with the full heart because I'm really, really grateful. So I really wanted to start with that. As you all know, the ETSA department was established from the TIP policy, the Targeted Instructional Improvement Plan, passed many years ago now, 2007, Board Policy 6012.1. And that policy outlines a lot of tasks, objectives, and goals for us, right? And so it, it's a Herculean policy that asks us to really be intentional about and to work across our district on improving African-American student outcomes in math, in reading, in high school A through G, in access to advanced courses. It lifts up other elements, other pieces and goals, like making sure that more African-American kids have access to preschool, really reducing the number of African-American students who are disproportionately referred to special education, as well as the number of African-American kids who are suspended and expelled, right? So it's, it's a lot of things. And then we have, in addition to that, we have a Sancofa Magnet Program that we've brought back. We have launched some work this year around racial slurs to help our sites, our, our principals and counselors and folks at the schools who are wrestling and grappling with this issue. And we have a Pacific Islander piece of our work as well. And so some, some objectives around that, that important work too. And so making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our kids who need support. So I'm just very proud to be the Director of ETSA and to have this support. I want to lift up some of the items that are here under differentiated assistance, because all of those objectives and goals that I just mentioned that are from the TIP policy or that are otherwise a part of our work. Thanks to Mrs. Applegate, our superintendent, cabinet, my good colleague, Ms. Sergeant, we're going to really be able to get after it in ways that are unprecedented and in ways that we just, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna leave it there. We're going to be able to get after it. And I'm excited about that. So this first piece here, if you are looking at the differentiated assistance actions in Goal 21, intervention staffing, this is critical. This is a crucial, crucial piece. And so because of this support, we are going to be able to deploy, train 35 resident guest teachers. We call them equity guest teachers. Most of them will be at the elementary, working with our African-American kids who are in upper grades, but who on the CASP, our state test, who have consistently scored at a level one or a level two. And so those would be our students who are either not meeting grade level standards in reading or nearly meeting them, right? And as you know, last year in 2023, in reading, almost 80% of our African-American students were a one or a two. Right? And so, so they're going to be doing some really important work at some of our elementary schools that have the highest populations, the highest concentrations of African-American kids who are struggling. They will be working with them every day in small groups around, specifically around reading comprehension and working to help them improve and build those crucial skills. We'll have another set of equity guest teachers who will be working at the middle school, specifically on math. And so they'll be pushing directly into math classes, helping middle school African-American kids in math class at the point where, where support is most needed, right? So in class during the day. So this was a piece that this past year, this year, we, we piloted. So next year will be our second year. This was our pilot year. And so we train our equity guest teachers twice a month. We're going to beef that up, continue to strengthen that, and make sure that we are refining that and supporting them so that they can do the work that's necessary. The second piece there, and I won't speak to everything here, but I do want to lift up a few of the actions here. The high school push-in tutoring, this has been tremendous for us. As you all know, one issue, one challenge that we have wrestled with for African-American kids for some time has been the DF rates, right? And so if you've been around, if you've looked at high school outcomes, the DF rates critically impact so many of the other variables. They certainly impact A through G. They impact graduation, even though we still get a lot of kids to graduate, but they gra, they impact the college and career readiness indicators. And then really just our kids' likelihood of being able to go to a college, not be stuck in remedial classes for one or two or more years, and really having the chance to graduate. So this past year, we were able to contract with Valdez Tutoring, and we were able to deploy math tutors directly in the high school math classes to, to support students right at the point where they needed it the most. We'll be able to do that again. And last year, our, when we piloted this model, this system for our first time ever, what we saw at the three equity high schools where we piloted this, we had some of the lowest DF rates for African-American ninth and 10th graders in the district, and lower than I'd seen at any point in my tenure as director. And so I'll just say, when I first came back to SBCUSD in 2019, 20, we had DF rates for African-American ninth and 10th graders at some schools that were in the 70% range and nearing 80% range. Last year, we saw those DF rates. And this was not just because of this program. Certainly, this was the hard work of principals and teachers and other systems, but all of these systems working together, we saw those DF rates at some of our high schools be in the 20% range, right? And in the 30% range. So it was literally, it had flipped. So we're going to continue to do that. Equity counseling, this is an important piece for our high schools as well. We are, we have two full-time high school equity counselors right now, one at Pacific High School and one at Indian Springs. And we're hiring a third over at San Bernardino High School. That one is being flown right now on Edjoin. Our equity counselors function kind of like our EL, our English learner counselors. They work, they, they don't supplement, or they don't supplant, rather, they supplement the rest of the work that our high school counselors are providing our kids. And they help our students specifically around grades, attendance, and wellness. So making sure that they understand their four-year plans, making sure that they're getting access to college courses through San Bernardino Valley so that they can be in concurrent enrollment, making sure that they're working with those tutors to push into the, the classes of students. If Will is getting a D or an F in integrated math two, then the equity counselor is a person who's looking at those grades every week and who's putting that tutor right there in that class with Will so that he's getting the support that he needs. So the equity counseling piece is, is critically important. I really want to thank Ms. Sergeant as well. So, so we have our staff. This year, we are going into next school year, we'll have eight full-time program specialists who will be working specifically on math and reading equity. So they'll be working with kids, with teachers, with administrators, with parents, specifically around closing these gaps. And so this is going to help us make sure that we can even afford these people, bring these folks on so that they can do the much-needed work. And most of these folks we have now, but we're hiring a couple of more, a couple more now. So we're really looking forward to that. And then I want to lift up our Sancofa piece as well. And I want to thank, again, Ms. Applegate, Mr. Ariano, and her evaluator, Dr. Funches, for, for bringing Tamika Casey back over into the ETSA department. So she's with us now as a principal on assignment, doing some really, really important work around the Sancofa Magnet Program. That is a program that many of you, you've heard that name, you're familiar with it. You remember the golden days, the glory days of Sancofa yesteryear. We brought it back last year, or right after we got out of COVID. There were some challenges around making sure that teachers had support and that students were supported. And so thanks to, again, our cabinet, Ms. Applegate, we're able to bring Tamika Casey back in the fold. And she's really providing some much-needed support so that we can beef up Sancofa, really strengthen it. And, and the goal is to begin to compete with some of the charters that have taken some of our African-American students. But moreover, we want to make sure that we have a system, and really a, a program here in our district that we can all be proud of and where we can say African-American kids are not just meeting and exceeding the standards, but they're comparable to any student group in the state of California. They're among the highest performing kids in the state of California. I've heard our superintendent say, you know, that he wants to see, he's given us the mandate of having Sancofa be a Golden Bell winner, right? So that's our goal. And, and thanks to Ms. Casey's help, we're going to be able to get there pretty soon here. So I'll kind of, I'll, I'll stop there because I could talk about this all night. But again, I want to make sure that you heard me say, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, because this level of support is really giving us capacity. It's empowering us. It's equipping us to really get after the work in a way that we have not been able to do before now.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Ms. Rosales, Medina?
I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation on both aspects. I mean, it was really detailed. And, and some of the things that, even when I had additional questions, you answered it, which was great. And I was just, you kept going. That's a skill that I wish I had, because sometimes you can go all over the place and you were on it. So I just want to say thank you. And then, of course, when it comes to Sancofa, I was with Tamika Casey when she was an elementary school teacher and just walking in her classroom and the scholar, the, the, the high-level teaching and learning these students were, were achieving was amazing. And it was unfortunate that after a while it started to, you know, diminish a little bit, and then now we're bringing it back. I'm so grateful that we are and that there's a goal for it, you know? And I'm wondering, maybe if you can explain a little bit more, is this not just going to be an elementary school? Is this something that's planning to progress into middle and maybe possibly high school?
Yes, absolutely. So this, next school year, we'll have K3. We'll be able to service K3 at Hunt Elementary. We'll be servicing, it looks like, grades six, seven, and eight over at Del Vallejo Middle School. And then because we have the high school equity counselor over at Pacific, the students can go from DV right over into Pacific. And they'll still be in, you know, general ed sort of mainstream, either college prep or AP honors classes, but they'll have the equity counselor there who will be able to support them.
And, and I do want to make sure that we kind of advertise this and promote this, because you are right. You know, we have lost students to charter schools. And, you know, I've been to a few of the charter schools. And what's different with Sancofa is that they're learning about themselves. They're learning, I mean, it's so much that they're learning. And a lot of times other programs, they're not, you know, yes, they have, have a high achieving, but they're not necessarily fully learning about themselves. So I think this is going to be a great, great marketing, also to bring students from other school districts. You know what, when we offer programs that other school districts are trying to dismantle, even with the, the diversity, equity, inclusion programs, we're bringing, you know, come down to our district. That could be definitely a way to increase our student numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you both. It's great. It was a very thorough presentation and made sense of the numbers and how they're being allocated. I have a question related to the Equity Multiplier. I, I heard the three years. However, the concern or the question that comes to mind is how are, how's the funding going to be managed within the three years?
So the report, there'll be reporting each year, and I work with our school site principals to give them regular updates for their budget. We have other funding sources that are one-time funding, but you have multiple years to spend it. For example, the Arts and Music Monday Prop 28 is the same pattern. And so we utilize already our current budget monitoring tools in collaboration with our fiscal services team here to ensure that the school understands how much they've expended down in one year. The expenditures that they have will align to their plan. In our purchasing system that we have now, they actually put in from their plan, they'll cite it as a justification to ensure alignment with the purchases that they're making. So they'll have not only the ongoing budget monitoring, but then each year, as we come to the annual update process for the LCAP, you will receive an update on the implementation of the program, as well as any adjustments. For example, if they get identified again, you might see new actions that are added in. Or if they make adjustments to their Equity Multiplier, you'll see those adjustments within the LCAP. So it'll be part of our budget monitoring that we have now, but also infused with our LCAP cycle.
Okay, thank you. Because I read the goals, and I was trying to understand strategically, how are we, how are the, how are the principals, I guess, putting together a strategy and defining their baseline each year? So one, they have a goal and they don't supersede that goal, but also an understanding of where they're starting so they know what they can achieve. I mean, I did read the goals, though.
Yeah, so the goals you'll see are assigned metrics are right below the goals. And in the metrics, you'll see the data for the baseline information. So that's year one. That's where we're starting. In year two, I will give you a data update of where they are in year two. And then again, in year three, what you see right now is year one, and then the next two years are obviously not filled out because we're not there yet. But there's a projected target outcome. But there's a projected target outcome. So this is what we are expecting them to get to if they are implementing these pieces here. And again, those are the red areas on their dashboard.
Yeah, just a question related to mitigation. So if there's something that happens that precludes them from meeting their goal or they see a problem achieving that because of whatever factors, it could be something that is out of their control, what kind of, I guess, considerations are they given?
So in the, in the plan, just below the metrics, you'll see the goal analysis section, and there are four prompts there that will be filled out next year during the annual update process. And part of that process is to explain, "We anticipated to spend this amount, but we were only able to spend a certain dollar amount," and they'll explain it. So you're able to explain if there were any differences in the implementation of the plan versus what you wrote out, as well as the expenditures versus what you budgeted. So the prompts will help guide them through that. And that follows the same process that we do with each of our actions within our LCAP. We have a goal analysis for each one. So you see where, if we, you know, spent more than what we budgeted or we spent less than what we budgeted. If, for example, a position is vacant, obviously, that salary savings, they would be able to utilize those funds for other actions that they have in their equity multiplier. So they are able to, if they need to make adjustments, and then it is explained during the annual update process.
Thank you. I have one more question. So related to the differentiated assistance actions, Dr. Greer. So the equity counseling services, I wasn't clear, are there only two counselors? Is that what I heard you say, or there's more than two equity counselors?
We have, will have three full-time within the month. One at Pacific, one at Indian Springs, one at San Bernardino High.
We have two now. We're increasing it to three for the 24-25 school year.
And then in terms of the planned non-contributing expenditures, it's 8.8 million? And that's specifically for the differentiated assistance?
Correct. And those come from a variety of sources of our unrestricted general fund as well as our restricted federal funding, Title I, Title II. Title I being our intervention services, Title II our professional development, as well as some of our one-time money with our Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. So there are multiple funding sources that are coming in to our LCAP that support this differentiated assistance Goal 21.
So the goals that are listed here, however, is there room for opportunity? If you can increase to four, if there's a need, is there a way to do that? Or is it three is a hard fact number, like you can only have three counselors, equity counselors?
So Dr. Greer and I, obviously, we are right down the hallway from each other. So we meet regularly. And I know in our director's meeting with Mrs. Applegate, if there are needs that come up, she's very good about asking what our needs are and how they might be supported. That goes to our executive cabinet and obviously input from our Board of Education as well. That's why you see many of these actions increasing because we have the input from not only our Edset team, our Ed Services team, and direction from the board.
I have one more question related to Sancofa. Are we, for Sancofa, the amount that's being allocated to Sancofa, are you also taking consideration robotics, AI, any of that? Because I, I mean, I know it's related to new knowledge, but I was just trying to figure out, what does that mean? And how are we allocating the funding?
So again, many thanks to Mrs. Applegate because we've gotten a ton of support for Sancofa. And so one of the pieces that I know we're going to be implementing next year is we'll have aides in each Sancofa class. So that's been a pretty big lift just in terms of making sure that the teachers have additional support. We're looking at different contracts as well to bring in just cultural enrichment, the arts, to support our students in Sancofa. We certainly can partner with our STEAM department to make sure that they're included in some of the good science and technology, right? That's coming out, so we can support them there, too. But one of the big pieces, though, too, is we just really want to make sure that our teachers are supported to provide a very robust, very strong, high expectations, culturally relevant model for students, right? We want to make sure that they are getting access to African American history and to cultural knowledge about themselves and their communities that's positive. And then we want to make sure that in those classes, our students are really, every day, being given the highest expectations for learning and academic achievement. We really mean it when we say we want our Sancofa kids to be among the highest-performing students in the state. So Ms. Casey and I really sort of honed in or lasered in on those areas as areas where we need to beef up and support so that we can make the program tight. But I think there's space in there to get some steam in there, too. So we'll work on that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Next, we have Ms. Scott.
I only have four short questions. The first one is, how does NWEA work for our English learners?
Our English learners take the same assessments as our students who are not identified as our English learners. And so when we pull the data from the NWEA, we're able to break the data up by all students who take it, just the English learners who take it, just the low-income who take it. So we're able to monitor their progress through that assessment along with other assessments. We have very similar tools that we can do that.
Then, is there any way to mandate that all campuses have a wellness center?
I think wellness is a shared goal that we have, not only from our site principals, but also from our school board. Dr. Rodriguez is really implementing a lot of exciting things through our wellness with the expansion coming with our community, our community schools. I'm not sure if you'd like to share some information?
Absolutely. Thank you. All of our schools in our district, all 73, have an integrated wellness approach of services on the continuum that provide a variety of different services from dental care to mental health supports, positive behavior supports. And they all look a little different at each level. The district is looking at opening multiple school-based health centers that include, that are kind of named, we use it synonymously, but they actually provide medical care as well as mental health at our high schools. So we're looking at creating hubs at school-based health clinics at our high schools. And so we have one that will be coming onboard in January 2025, right behind us. We also have one being done at San Andreas, one at Indian Springs, and one that's in discussion at Arroyo Valley. But our goal is that all high schools will have a functioning school-based health clinic that's able to support the school as well as the neighboring schools in the cluster.
Before we move on, Crystal, to answer your question also, we do have NWA in Spanish. So for our English learners that are predominantly Spanish-speaking, they do take it in Spanish as well.
And then I saw in the packet, there was something called Bringing Hope to Saturdays. Can you explain what that is?
Bringing Hope to Saturdays is a program through our Student Services. Dr. Rodriguez, if you'd like to share, I can share it with you. Yep, so it's an enrichment program that's offered to our students. It happens on Saturday. It's a half-day program. It's not at all of our school sites. It is at a growing number of our school sites where they invite students to come. The students participate in movement activities, academic activities. They're not only able to work with peers in different grade levels, but also to, you know, have some extra time at school. If they've missed school, for example, they're able to come. So we do invite our students to come. They have lunch also at school on those days. It is not at all schools, though. It is at only some of our schools.
And just to add to that, just to kind of be very focused, it is our intervention to be able to support students who are chronically absent as well as attendance. So it's our Saturday school for students to be able to make up their attendance.
And then, is it possible if I could join the African American task force?
Absolutely. So our last meeting of this school year is coming up on Tuesday. So it'll be June 11th over at the Inland Career Education Center, formerly Adult Ed. So yes, absolutely. Please join us. It'll be from 5:00 to 7:00. And we'll certainly, my staff and I, we will be going more in-depth on the work that we did this year, how we use the funds that we were allotted this year, the successes that we had for African American students, some of the lessons learned. So we would love to have you come join us, Ms. Scott.
You said it was where?
At the Inland Career Education Center. It's 1200 North D Street? E Street, 1200 Northeast Street.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scott. Mrs. Chahusky?
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank you, Ms. Sergeant. I was recently at the CSBA Delegate Assembly, and the LCAP was a large part of our conversation and just the work that it takes to compile it. So I know people don't understand, like, how much work goes into that. So I just wanted to say thank you because I know that it is a huge lift. And so I appreciate you for that. My questions on the equity multiplier. I know that it's a three-year, year one, but if they're still, they still qualifying year two, that they would get a new grant. My question is really about, what is the consequence? Like, how long do they keep qualifying? Or, you know, if they're not moving? I mean, I know we would have some issue with that, but is there something from the state or do they continue to get money? Or how is that going to work?
So the identification, right now, the criteria, it looks to be that it would be the same, that non-stability rate and the free and reduced-priced meal. So there's no penalty if your dashboard data doesn't improve. I think this is the question you're asking. But I do think that comes from the oversight of our cabinet team, who are our site leader, you know, principal evaluators, as well as the cluster leads that support our schools. As they set targets within their school plan for student achievement, they have goals within those plans that they should be improving student academics. So the accountability would happen locally here. It wouldn't happen at the state level because the identification is not based on data. It's based on demographics, yet you have to address data.
Right.
It's a little tricky.
Yeah, so I was trying to figure out how that actually worked within their, like, you know, hey, do we get to keep this in perpetuity?
Yes.
And then, will it survive the budget year? Because I know it's 24-25, and we don't actually have that budget yet. And I don't know if that's a Mr. Cabinet question or a Ms. Sergeant question.
No intention to cut it as far as it stands right now. It has a mixed reception because the initial Assembly Bill was very targeted towards African American student achievement. And when this came out as equity multiplier, and it is the lowest performing, that's based on the lowest performance level, which is red. In our district, we have seen gains, as Dr. Greer said. So for many of our schools, our African American students are actually coming out of that red and into the orange because they're growing. So it's not meeting that original intent of the Assembly Bill. So it has a mixed acceptance. As of right now, it is still there. It's maybe down the line. I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball, but they could change the eligibility of it. But as it stands right now, it would continue.
Okay, thank you. Just kind of like, how is that going to work for us? On the differentiation, easy for me to say, differentiated assistance. I'm really happy to see the equity counseling services. I'm hoping that we can expand that to all of our high schools ultimately. I want to make sure, you know, one of the things, a lot of our counseling services now at the high schools tend to be around, you know, grades and college and academics and that such a thing. And at that level, where I know we have a lot of wellness needs, we don't often get the wellness piece of that for our kids. And I know, you know, engagement, like, one of the reasons our kids aren't succeeding is they're not engaged. And when they become not engaged, whether it's either trauma on campus or trauma outside of campus, their attendance drops and, you know, we see something there. So I'm hoping that in that equity counseling piece, that there will be a piece that where it's not, that they're working in tandem with the regular school counselors who are really focused on the academic, you know, the academic scheduling, classes, all of that kind of stuff. And that also kind of helps them more on the attendance engagement piece so that they're able to actually succeed. Is that, because I know you mostly talked about the other part, but you did sort of mention wellness. So I'm just kind of wondering, what is that supposed to look like?
Oh, I'm in full agreement with you, Ms. Chahusky. This is a crucial part of the work of our high school equity counselors. And so when we hire them and onboard them, we are very explicit about the need to focus on grades, attendance, and wellness. And this is where, again, they don't supplant, but supplement the work of the counselors because we recognize that our African American students, like many of our students, right? Just have these needs and these concerns specifically around just wellness, anxiety, depression, disengagement, some of the things that they are struggling or wrestling with at home and cannot, don't have the luxury of checking them at the door, right? And sort of walking into the school without these sort of invisible worries on their shoulders. So it's really important that our equity counselors build relationships with them, really support them, but really kind of play both roles. Because on the one hand, we want to have, we want to make sure that there are additional folks at the schools who have good relationships with our students, who our students can go to and feel like, you know, this person really cares for me. But at the same time, we also want to make sure that we're moving our kids towards A through G and towards college and towards careers and towards a viable future for their lives. So I really push our high school equity counselors and our high school equity team to really make sure that we're serving those twin goals, those twin needs of our kids. And so this, it's a support that I'm really grateful that we have. Working with Mrs. Applegate, we've been able to establish this role. It didn't exist before, a year and a half ago. So it's a fairly new role that we're still kind of piloting, too. But yeah, they do some critical work.
Agreed. And thank you. I mean, you heard it from Ms. Scott tonight, but we have nine student board members. And every single one of them, in some way, when they're up here, has asked for more wellness, wellness centers, more wellness, mental health support, whether they were our student going to Harvard or our students who are, you know, more struggling academically, or student board members. They've all been asking for more at the high school level, mental health and wellness support. So I'm hoping that this will, you know, bring at least some support for our kids. My last thing is really around, then this isn't a direct, well, first off, I just want to say thank you because there's a lot on here. And I appreciate what Edsa is doing to try to address all of this and your work on all of this because it is a huge lift. And I get it. I'm glad that we gave you a little help with Ms. Casey. So that's all good news. But I would like to see, I know we used to look at and sort of evaluate monthly the, like, suspension data and really looking at, looking at suspensions from our, particularly from our high schools, who is getting suspended, what they were getting suspended for, how many times they were getting suspended, the patterns between them. I know, you know, as a panel member, that used to be one of the jobs that I had. And I would really like to kind of see, like, what is it? You know, if we're going to be targeting, particularly for African American students in light of this and trying to move them out of the red, I would like to see sort of some kind of assessment, maybe, of this last year's data of what are our African American students being suspended for or expelled for? And are there patterns, you know, certain schools that are, you may be suspending more or things that we can kind of help address so that we can give you the supports that you need and that our school sites need to support those students, the teachers and the administration at those sites to bring down those suspension dates? I don't think we've taken in a couple of years that deep dive into that data that we used to, you know, it used to be every month that we had to look through those suspension reports. So if we could maybe get something like that, and I know that's actually more to you, but I just think it would be helpful data, you know, for what you're doing here as well as for us in decision-making. Thank you very much again for your presentation tonight and for all the work that you're going to be doing and putting this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky. Ms. Grande?
Just real quick, I just want to say thank you so much for the clarity and the heart and everything of this report. It's only been the second time in my whole life I've heard one of these. So this year, it really makes a lot more sense. And I think you did it last year, too. And I just want to thank you for making it really simple to understand. And there was only one question, of course, there's always just one question. I had about the Howdes Educational Services and what they do and how are they doing, by the way?
It did really well. So I'm really anxiously looking forward to our second semester final grade data. We should have that available. final grade data. We should have that available pretty soon, and my team will go through it and analyze it. But looking at last year's data, they were a huge help. So, again, our high school equity counselors, it's kind of a two- or three-fold system of support. But basically, we have our African-American kids in our high schools. At the sites where we have our high school equity counselors, they pull their real-time gradebook grades every two weeks, like clockwork. So, they pull those grades, and we take a look at it. The students on the list who have the most Ds and Fs in math, at those sites, we have usually two to three Valdez's math tutors. So, my equity counselors then appoint and sort of direct or coordinate the tutors to go into the classrooms with the students who are most struggling. And the only time that the students don't get the support is if they're absent, right? And so, the chronic absenteeism is another piece that we're sort of working on and wrestling with, with our African-American students, because that sometimes kicks our butt too, to be frank. But our counselors, though, they're able to put the tutor directly in the classroom with the students who need the support the most, and then the kids get help.
So, you'll be there at their dinner, awards dinner tomorrow night, right?
I think it's at five o'clock?
Five or 5:30, yes. I wanted to go, but I really wanted to hear something about them, you know. I just didn't want to go over there, and, you know.
Mr. Valdez has been a very supportive partner. He's been a great partner.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Ms. Grande, you have something else?
Related to the Math Excellence Program, is that a part of the differentiated assistance action?
Yes. So, it is over there, extended learning time, Saturday and summer programs. And I got to thank you, Ms. Alexander. We did the, we piloted a Math Excellence Saturday Academy this year. So, right before, or during spring break, right before testing, my team worked really, really hard to put this math academy together. I think we had something like, I want to say 17 to 20 teachers who volunteered their time. They got paid, but they still gave up basically their free time during spring break to come on Saturdays and teach half a day. And so, we supported kids from first to eighth grade, specifically in math. Again, I want to thank you. You brought us some snacks that first day, and really helped us out, and the kids loved it. That was super helpful. And so, we're still kind of going through those data, but our ultimate hope is that we were able to give the students a little bit of an extra boost as they went into testing, and that we kind of helped battle just, you know, that spring break brain drain. So, that's something that we'll continue to do next year. We may even look at expanding it if we can.
Thank you, and a great presentation. What year did you say that the targeted instruction policy was implemented?
Oh, seven.
Yeah. I just want to give some historical perspective, because I go to conferences a lot, I hear about these districts that have these DAC programs, almost, a lot of districts have one now. It all started here in San Bernardino. But, the backstory is, Westside Action Group had a committee, and they had some concerns. And at the time, their leaders were Batiboo, Jaycocks, and Walter Hawkins.
Walter Hawkins, yes.
And they had given me a long list of all these things they wanted, like, just like 20 things. I was talking to Batiboo on the phone, we were going over the list, and we had talked, and then we talked again later. And the one thing that struck me was, they wanted a policy. And Batiboo said, we need the policy, because, you know, the work we're doing now, if you were to leave, then how we know for sure that the district is still going to continue it? And that made sense to me at the time. You know, we needed a policy, so that no matter who was on the board at the time, the direction was still going to be there to target those students. Because even then, the numbers were just terrible in terms of the performance. And so, that was the way that the TIP policy came about. At that time, it was Dr. Dogado was the superintendent, and Dr. Judy White was the deputy superintendent. And they created all those, the policy, and the board approved it. And don't lose sight of the fact, it was a lot of controversy behind it. I was on KFI radio, and some board members didn't support it. So, it wasn't an easy lift. It seems easy now, but it wasn't at the time. But I just want to get that perspective. But I have to say this, since 2007, this is the first time that I feel like everything's in line at the district to truly do what the initial thought was, to impact the students in a way that the hope was there.
Yes, sir.
Because so many pieces had to be in place in order to make it happen. And we've never been there. But I can tell you from my perspective, this is the first time we have a chance of doing what we wanted to do at that time. And if we do it, we'll again be a leader, not only in the state, but in the country. Because the numbers are bad throughout the state and throughout the country. And we're doing things here in San Bernardino that no one else is doing anywhere else. And I want to commend you all for your work, all the assistance, because that's what it takes, the whole team, all the employees that work day in and day out to make it happen, and have that goal. But I really do have a sense that something big is going to happen within the next five years, if we can continue in the direction that we're in right now. And, you know, it's no small part that we have Mr. Ariano, because, you know, he gets it, he understands it, he wants to see the success. And I think a large part is because he worked at Root Time Records.
That's real San Bernardino, right there.
It's real San Bernardino. Really can't fake, you can't fake the funk. But, no, I feel really good about where we are at a district right now. So, I want to commend you, and just look forward to the work that you all are going to continue to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close that public hearing, and I will open a new public hearing for our fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget. And under that hearing, I'll let Mr. Comnick give his presentation.
Good evening, President Tillman, Vice President, Ms. Subios, Superintendent Ariano, Board Trustees, and Executive Cabinet. My name is Terry Comnick, Associate Superintendent of Business Services, along here with Ms. Trias Huey, Director of Fiscal Services, for the Preliminary Budget Fiscal Year 2024 presentation. I just want to mention that I am very thankful of a board, such as all of you, that take your fiduciary responsibility for our budget extremely serious, and look to maximize our funding in the most strategic and allowable ways that make this district shine. Tonight's objectives, we're going to talk a little bit about the Governor's May revise, the proposed budget update, some budget assumptions that we've built into the 2425 budget, multi-year projections, and what that budget calendar will look like at the end of the June cycle. So, just a brief overview for the board on the state budget update, some of the highlights. The May revise came out, and the shortfall was right around $45 billion in January, to about $27.6 billion, with about $17.3 billion reduced due to early actions and solutions applied to that shortfall by the governor. The May revise proposed an increase in funding, a funded COLA of 1.07%, which would, for San Bernardino City Unified, would be approximately $2.1 million in additional funding. There, you may have heard on the news about a conundrum, a maneuver, a potential early deal regarding the Prop 98 funding concerns, and CTA, CSBA, and some legislative agreements out there to be finalized, not yet finalized. But suffice it to say, that the course of action that the governor has now taken in light of this, these potential agreements, has put Prop 98, K-14, education in the best possible position, considering where we were. So, we are in a more positive light than we were just a short time ago. Some of the notable delays that impact the budget proposal for 2425 from the state are delays in the preschool TK kindergarten facilities program of about $550 million. Now, we've already received approximately $8 million of that that we're utilizing. So, in the short term, we won't necessarily be impacted directly, because we have received some of that funding. So, we'll have to wait and see how this plays out in the next coming years. Also, the governor has reduced the school facility program by $500 million, down to $375 million, with the hope that the governor will put a state bond near $15 billion on the ballot in November, which can be beneficial to us as well. Excellent, please. So, there are some risks that we need to be cautious of, and kind of that eyes-wide-open mindset. We've got that sticky inflation. I know that the gas prices have kind of ticked up. OPEC has spoke the other day, and said that they're not going to release any additional oil. So, that may have an impact on fuel prices and so forth. Then, we look at California employment rate, kind of ticked up, I believe at 5.3%. We've got slow growth going on. We also have high interest rates, which will impact our high-income learners, perhaps, and also our investments in purchasing houses and high-end products, as well as geopolitical factors that are occurring currently overseas. So, our budget assumptions for 2425, I did mention earlier about the cost-of-living adjustment of 1.07%. We're looking at our average daily attendance to increase about a half percent to 92 in 2425. We have some increased costs. Now, I mentioned that the COLA was going to be about a $2.1 million increase. But looking at the next two bullets, you'll see that that's easily consumed by our step-in column increase of about $7.1 million, and our health and welfare increases by 2.73%, or roughly about $2.1 million, thereabout. Pension costs remain stable for STIRS, and then for PERS, it ticked up about 0.37% for 2425. Excellent. What I wanted to point out here to the board is our enrollment versus average daily attendance. You've got a lot of action going on here. That crossbar, which is the SEbeds enrollment number, it still is on a decline. And, but I'd like to point out to the board that that decline is not a precipitous cliff. If we go back to 2223, and moving into this year, it reduced about 1,260 students in SEbeds. What we're projecting next year is an 859 student drop, and the subsequent year, going in from 2425 to 2526, we're looking at 438 student drop. So, it is still declining, but it's slowing. So, I think we are in the right mindset in terms of the presentation that came before us, and looking at all the wonderful things that are happening in and at our schools, can definitely serve as a draw to bring additional students back to our district. Excellent. Looking at the multi-year projections, we'll start with the 2324 estimated actuals, and then look at, on the right side of the slide, the 2425 proposed or projected budget. What you notice here, I'll just, I'm going to work from left to right and down. So, left down, and then I'll go to the right top and work down. So, as we look at the blue bars, we see that the top one is the beginning fund balance. I want to focus on the unrestricted side of $114 million coming into this school year. And as you see, as we go down that, to the ending fund balance, you'll see it drop to 78.4 million. Approximately $36 million deficit spending is occurring. And then, as you look over at the combined general fund for the end of this school year, the estimated actual is right about $258 million. That is both restricted and unrestricted combined. Now, that goes up to the next top part, the 2425 projected budget. You'll see that that 78.4 billion, a million, billion, projected ending fund is now the beginning fund balance for 2425. You'll notice that there's a fair increase in, not only in expenditures, revenue ticked up a little bit there in the unrestricted, partly because of the COLA, and also partly because of our increased transportation costs. So, we get a little tick up in that capacity. But you'll notice that the costs have seemed to increase almost $100 million. We are losing our SRR3 funding. We have exhausted it, and that ends this year. So, what we had been covering with SRR3 will now fall to our general unrestricted, for the most part. We're trying to be very strategic in how we absorb those identified costs that are what we'll call lever turners, in terms of the productivity and outcomes with our student data. And then you'll see that the deficit spending increased up to $50 million, to where it's now impacted our ending fund balance for the unrestricted, down to $27.8 million. Combined with our restricted, it's at $163. So, you can see from this year to next year, at this time, we're projecting it to be about $163.4 million. Now, there might be some additional fallout as we go into next year, that will show itself as we go through uncharted actuals, and then we get to first interim in December. We'll get a better picture on where the dust settled, and what our actual dollars look like for our next school year. Excellent, please. This is part of the required multi-year projection, so we take it two years out. And this is very difficult, because it is two years out, and a lot of things can happen between now and the time these come to fruition. But we do have some COLAs built into this, consistent with what the School Services Dartboard has shared with us. So, in 2526, we're looking at a 2.93% COLA, and in 2627, we're looking at a 3.08% COLA. Also, you'll see that the revenues are increasing from one year to the next, partly because of that COLA, but also because of our transportation costs. We get that 60% from the prior year's expenditures. You'll see that we've taken steps to be very intentional and strategic on the programs and activities that are serving the district's students well. And what we're trying to do here is look at some of those cost items that might be able to be released, or let go, if you will, to bring us into a more solvent, not a deficit spending situation, as you see on the unrestricted side of 2526, a $5 million on the plus side, if you will, which increases our ending fund balance from the beginning fund balance to $32 million. And then, that carries over to the top of 2627, again, looking at the unrestricted side. And you'll see that we've, again, are very conscientious about our expenditures vis-a-vis our revenues, and the programs and activities that we're finding to be most productive and beneficial to our students. And we also see here the potential of a $6 million increase to our unrestricted ending fund balance, to bring it to almost $40 million, with a combined of $75.3 million at that out year of 27 June. So, those are projected, based on assumptions, and the best information that we have to date. Excellent. On this slide, I just wanted to break down the contributions. There's a $103, $104 million contribution that comes out of our general unrestricted funds. And just to be transparent with the board, what is that comprised of? Well, if you look at the red arrows that I have highlighted for you to the right, you'll see that of that $103 million for 2425, 71 million of it is augmenting our special education program. $31 million is required, 3% set aside for routine repair and maintenance, and another 1.25 million for CSA advancement, excuse me, per negotiations. And you can see that trend more or less stays constant throughout the next couple of years, little slight tapering as expenditures tend to dip. That 3% will be a little bit less than the prior year. Excellent. The budget calendar, the red arrow is showing where we are right now in June. July 1 starts the brand-new fiscal year, although the fiscal year has already started in a way. the brand new fiscal year, although the fiscal year has already started in a way with purchase recs and so forth. So we have already begun the 2425 school year in effect. We just don't affect anything until the board has adopted the budget. And in September, we'll start our uncharted actual presentation, first interim and so forth. With that, President Tillman, we're here to field any questions that the board might have.
Couple of questions. On the 1.07 COLA, what is that total amount to us?
About 2.1 million.
That's the total?
Yes, sir.
And then I know I even had discussed with you Terry about some of this stuff already, but I just had a question. On page seven?
Which the slide?
Page seven? Yeah, like on the restricted, I know we took the 96 million dollars from the unrestricted and put it in the restricted, right?
Yes, sir.
But my question is, the beginning balance was 188 million, right?
Yes, sir.
And your ending balance, after you move the money in, is still 179 million, right? So why did you have to move it if you had enough money in restricted already? Just out of curiosity.
That is, as I shared in that one slide, Mr. Tillman, that is accommodating our special ed overage, if you will. So that is specifically a contribution to special ed as well as our restricted routine maintenance.
Okay. And if you had, let me ask this question. If you had not moved it, what would happen?
So the restricting, restricted balances are for specific programs. So part of that is arts music instructional materials, equity multiplier. They are held for specific things.
Well, there's 96 million worth of things that didn't qualify for expenses that the restricted money was not qualified to pay for.
Correct.
An example of those type of things are what?
The routine repair maintenance account, which we are required to put 3% in Fund 14 every year, 3% of our total expenditures, and then for special education services. So our services, our expenditures go beyond what we receive in revenue.
All right. And I think too, you know, it's no matter what the governor's done, I appreciate what he's done to be creative about not allowing the cuts to affect K-12, our school district. That's a big deal to me. But I do get the sense that we're going to have budget problems for the next couple of years. So I just want to make sure we're positioning ourselves to be able to accommodate the cuts that are coming. It's obvious more cuts are coming. So I know, like we had the discussion today about the, some of the pathway program and some discussion about whether or not there were enough students in some of the classrooms. What's the minimum right now? What's the minimum? What do we have set as the policy for the ratio in classes? Is it 24 to 1? What is it right now?
Wait, 24 to 1 is part of our K-3. And then you have, I mean TK is going to be less than that. But then we get into our primary upper grades, which I believe are 33 to 1. And then we have our middle school, which I believe are 29 to 1. And then our high schools are 30.
Let's use middle school as an example.
Yes, sir.
So let's say we have a pathway and you don't have 29 students in that class at a middle school. That means that that class is costing you more than what you're being reimbursed for from the state, right?
Those are negotiated numbers that I shared with you.
We did it based on what we think we could afford, right?
Correct.
And you base your budget on that, right?
Correct.
So my only point is, I really think that we need to be cognizant of that. And I really think we have like programs that are, we think are good and we have these relationships with the different organizations that somehow we are able to advertise across the district and maybe have students get recruited into the programs. Because times are changing now and the money is not, it's getting tight. So we, I don't think we can run the risk of having programs that don't have enough students in a specific class to pay for that class because then it becomes unsustainable. And if I tell people all the time, if we were to not produce a positive budget certification, meaning a balanced budget, and we went to qualify or we defaulted, people wouldn't say the district did it because they were doing such a good job with the pathway. They would say we were fiduciary irresponsible. So I guess I'm saying if we have a lot of programs where we don't have enough students, you know, somehow we need to know about that. And then we can make decisions on, you know, advertising or combining the programs or doing something to make sure that financially that makes sense. I'm looking for board consensus on that to get the feedback. Ms. Sabios.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. And I guess I'll start with kind of going back to what Mr. Tillman was saying. You know, it makes perfect sense that if a classroom is not being filled, you know, it's costing us more than we're getting back from it, right? But I do appreciate the fact that we want to get that information ahead of time because if there are going to be cuts that are going to be suggested in the future, which we don't know, right, we want to make sure that we are not appearing like we are favoring one program versus another program, right? That we are really making decisions based on data. And then also, you know, some of these programs that may not be sufficiently filled, what can we start doing now to help them fill those spots, right? Because a lot of times, you know, a teacher at a specific school may not have the capacity or the resources necessarily readily available to that individual person to be able to do an outreach, you know, or, you know, whatever is necessary to be able to attract and fill in those spots. And so I would really like to see, you know, what the pathways are, you know, all of that information, and then give them an opportunity, give the community an opportunity to be able to say, hey, this is what we have available. We are, and be honest and transparent, you know, we are looking to either fill it up or we're going to have to get rid of it, right? But it doesn't come from left field, nobody's side blinded, right? And then the other question that I had was specifically related to that 96 number that Mr. Tillman had pointed out. So you said that it went to two different areas. One was like facilities and the other one was facilities and maintenance, I think you said in the other one.
Yeah, there were three areas that split up. And you're right on the special ed side. There's also, for that specific amount of 96 million, 63.3 million went to special ed support, 31.6 went to maintenance, routine maintenance and repair, and then 1 million went to the CSA advanced degree stipend.
So with regard to special education, what was, what was the number last year? Specifically for special education?
The number last year for 2223? Well, the
But that's combined.
The contribution was 50 million, but they, the special ed receives, I want to say about 48 million in state. And then there's another IDA, I think another 12 million from the feds. So between those two, that would be 60, about 110 million plus or minus combined of resource availability to support the special ed program.
So let me make sure I'm understanding correctly. That 96 and that 63 really that went to the special education, that is supplementing funds, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay. Okay. So that 100, what was it, 1?
About 110 million if I add all the resources together.
So that 110 million last year was money that was also contributed to special education? Because that's the question I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. The amount contributed to special ed is the 63. The amount that came in.
From the unrestricted money?
From the unrestricted, yes, sir. Thank you. There is special ed identified money we receive from the state, about 40, 48 million. And then from the feds, another 12 million. That's specific special ed. But that is not, that's not enough funding to execute all the responsibilities that we have in special ed. That's why we contribute the unrestricted side to that, to the level that you see.
Right. So I guess the question that I'm asking is, this year, we're having to contribute 63 million additionally from the unrestricted. The question that I have is, what did we contribute last year additionally to that?
50 million is right here.
But is that, is that just solely for special education or was that combined, the combined?
No, that's just.
Okay. So we saw a slight increase from last year to this year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Ms. Alexander?
Thank you for the report. I actually have a question related to the routine repair and maintenance required because I heard transportation, but I don't see transportation on here. So I was trying to figure out exactly what is that referencing in terms of routine repair?
Transportation is not a contribution. So you won't see it on the contribution listing. It's, well, we have transportation expenses, but then starting two years ago, I believe it was 2223, the state passed a transportation reimbursement program where every year now we will get 60% of the previous year's expenditures reimbursed back to us. And so for 2324, we received 60% of our expenditures from 2223. And because our expenditures went up so much this year, next year, our reimbursement will be increased by $11 million. So it's just shown in the revenues line. It's just unrestricted state revenue. You won't see it under the contributions. You'll see it. It'll be part of the unrestricted revenues.
Okay. Thank you. So how do we qualify for the reimbursement or the?
We don't qualify. It's automatic and the state provides.
So there's no criteria for that?
We do. I'm sorry, go ahead.
There is a transportation plan that was board approved back in March that we do and review annually. And we update the, what the actions are and what the estimated revenue costs are. Those are included in the plan.
So then going back to the routine repair maintenance required, from 2425 to 2526, 2627, what's your methodology behind the reduction? Why is it reducing?
It's based on 3% of our total expenditures for combined expenditures. So as our expenditures go up or down, that contribution follows.
No, but what is the criteria? Like what are you looking at? What are you basing that on for that reduction? What are the factors that play into that reduction?
I think it's because your actual revenues are going down now because of the SRR money and some of the other money running out, right?
Correct.
So you take 3% of a lower budget, then those numbers go down.
I get it. But when I look at your risk slide, I just don't understand how we would think that that would reduce that slide.
I'm sorry, Ms. Alexander. Which slide are you looking at specifically?
The first one where it says risk of state budget. Just when you look at just factors, I'm trying to understand, based on the factors and then your number, your reduction, how does that equate? Like what?
Oh, this, oh, this slide. I was just trying to show the national and then the state of California, the impacts that might have on our economy. And then our economy would have the impact on our revenue capacity from the big three tax, taxations that we take, whether it's personal income or corporate or property taxes. And then also there's retail.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Husky?
I just wanted to clarify, if you go back to the contributions page, I'll make sure. So I was hearing Ms. Sabios's questions. So in, I'll say Carmen Parlay, it's the special education contributions is the, what we would, what folks call the encroachment on general fund, right? That's the encroachment on our general fund for the unfunded liabilities of the state and the federal government that they have not been paying us for special education. So the not fully funding IDEA and only giving us 40% plus the fraction that we get from the state as well, leaves us with an encroachment on our general fund of each of those. So this year, 63 million, next year, 71 million, which is really the responsibility, right?
That is correct.
Well said, Ms. Husky.
Just clarifying. The state's using the term contribution instead of encroachment now, but they are exactly the same.
Yeah, but that sounds like they're contributing and they're not contributing. I just want to make it clear that this is the encroachment that the state and the federal government have to fund our education, special education program. And that has been promised and that is not funded and is impacting our general education services with the encroachment. Not that, I believe that we need to provide the services for our kids, but I just want to, or all of our students and our special education students and that we should be providing those services to them. But I just wanted, you know, very clear that this is an encroachment on everything else that we do by that. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of piggyback on that to say, okay, this is how I understand that to be.
Thank you, Ms. Husky. Ms. Medina?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm also looking on page number six, which is the enrollment versus average daily attendance, the ADA. And then I know that we were looking at 94.09% enrollment rate pre-COVID. And so realistically, what's our goal to reach? Because I know it says there an estimated 93% is what our district's goal is. Is what prevents us from going up to where we were pre-COVID?
I think what prevents us is just getting the, I think, the mindset of our students to, and families to return back to our schools on a regular occurring basis, you know, to be present. I think the Vision 2030 will have a definite impact. The programs that were shared by Dr. Gurr and Ms. Sergeant, I think those will impact. The more engaging and enriching we offer our educational and instructional programs, I think that's the ticket to bring our kids back to us.
Okay. Because I know that for every percent, it increases the amount of money that we also receive that can also help with our budget.
100%.
Yeah. So then one of my things that we're, and I'm glad we have an amazing, we've always had a great team, but just with the addition with our communications, is looking at how do we increase the amount of students coming to our school districts, also recruiting from outside areas? I mean, the amount of programs that we do offer, this is an opportunity. If there's school districts that, like I mentioned earlier, shutting down programs, well, we're offering it here. And just marketing to others and surrounding districts hopefully that can open up and increase the amount of enrollment, or the students enrolled in our school district. But also, of course, looking at the attendance rate. So I think those are extra monies that we, realistically, we can achieve on that level. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. She no further questions. Presentation needs to be over. We will close the public hearing. Section 9, 9.1, discussion of possible renaming of the Welcoming Center. At the May 7, 2024 Board Meeting, Member Medina asked to agendize a discussion on the possible renaming of the Welcoming Resource Center, currently being built in honor of Francis Grice, the civil rights activist who played a role in the desegregation of Seminole Dino schools. Ms. Medina and then Dr. Wyatt.
And there was an excerpt that I read in a newspaper article. It was until 1973, when the Supreme Court ruled a guilty verdict over Seminole Dino School District for its role in segregation and discrimination. A victory for her city and Grice was who helped fight the 10-year suit. So when I had spoken to her, I had the privilege of speaking with her. You know, she really supported me back in my earlier years when I was running. And she really worked with our Mexican-American, our Mexican community, as well as our African American community, and really looking at desegregation. And she fought not only here in California for our students in our area, but also in Washington DC. So it was something that she always asked me, Abigail, we should have like a community center before her passing. before her passing. And so I think the welcoming center, honestly, I wish this place would have been named after her, but I know that it was recommended with Margaret Hill. But, you know, she, she is really what advocacy is, what parent engagement is, where you bring programs to our school district. And she, not only that, she was, she would tell me that sometimes leaders are, are not courageous. And, you know, she, she mentioned a few leaders within our community that weren't courageous, and she fought regardless. We had the Ku Klux Klan. We had so many things going against her, and she still fought again. She was courageous. She didn't let down while others might have just stayed silent. She stood up and she fought for our children as a parent and as a community leader, regardless of others that were staying silent. So I, I really do wish that we name the welcoming center after her. She is an example of what true family and parent engagement is.
Ms. Medina, Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Board President Tillman. And I wouldn't argue at all with Ms. Rosales Medina on her recommendation. I, I've been giving it some thought myself. And, you know, there's a number of names that come up for me in regards to welcoming center and how would that represent our community, not just now and not before, but also in the future. So it should be significant, in my opinion, on who it is. And I came up with three names. Just, I think we should look at options. And one was the first Latino superintendent of our, our organization, our district, and that was Art Delgado, Dr. Art Delgado. And then second was Dr. Harold Volkmer for his over forty years of service to our community. And then the last one was one of our longest, if not the longest standing, board member, which would be President Danny Tillman. And those are my recommendations.
Ms. Grande?
Well, I'd like to maybe make sure all of us can come up with three names to submit and then have a further discussion, because this is kind of like a surprise to me. I'd like to, and although I do honor Ms. Francis Grice, you know, she, I'm certain she's all of those things and much more. But the truth is that I've never heard of her before up until this moment. So I, I don't know if I could support someone whose name I, I have yet to understand. And, and I know there are a lot of people, and I know that the next few years, we're going to have a lot of new rooms and areas and beautiful buildings. We might find a place for every single one. And so it's just real early, I think, to just decide just like that for something that's going to be with us and be with us and our children and our children's children. So I, I do have hope that we could have something that children of right now and tomorrow will find a little bit relevant in them, you know, to, to someone that they can align to. Even now, there's children that by the time they get here, they won't know who Margaret Hill is or was. So I, I would like to at least start out in the twenty-first century with people that have some kind of knowledge. And if not, and if we do decide to go with someone, then let's promote that person and market it. And, you know, I for one would look at somebody like Nicholas Cataldo, you know, that's just one. But I can think of a few others, you know, that, that are around. So that, that's all my suggestion is maybe each and every one of us could find three names. And remember, just, just, and then maybe there'll be none of them. Maybe we'll table the whole idea for a while. That's all.
But that's a fair ask. So what I would suggest is that we agendize it for the next meeting and have a process where everybody submits three names that they, if you, if you want, if you don't, if you don't want to submit any, you don't have to. But each board member can submit up to three names. And then we'll do a ranking like we always do with the numbers and decide on a, a name. But it's, it's fair. I mean, this was agendized, but we didn't see it coming. So let's just be fair about it, give everybody a chance to ponder it, talk to the community, get community input, and then agendize it. Do I see consensus for that? Ms. Chahuski?
I just have a question. Are, is there like criteria or are there some criteria that we should?
There is board policy in, in, in terms of the regular way to name a building. And we usually use that. But there are, it's not, it's not unusual for there to be an exception. You decide that, hey, because we have this big building going up across the street, that we want to name it after somebody. And the board can take its privilege to suspend that policy and then do it ourselves.
I just wondered, because the last time I did it was when we named Arroyo. It was the last time we went, I went through any kind of a process for naming. So I just didn't know if there's like criteria or if there's, like, would we do that? So, okay, I'll look for that. Thank you.
But the policy was suspended to name this room after Dr. Hill. So, you know, and we.
I just wanted to know, so for bringing three names, like, it's just, any three names or if it's like, oh, no, they have to, you know?
Their time?
I just didn't know.
Yeah, I just said that because it made sense.
No, that wasn't my question. It was more like, you know, they have to, they have to have lived in the community or they have to, you know?
There is, there is board policy. You can read it. But I thought, what I would do, if we're going to do this, we would, I would have Mr. Ariano to meet with council, pass the item to suspend the policy, and then allow the board to vote on something. Okay, we have Ms. Alexander. Now we have Ms. Medina.
And, and I, I understand that we all want to make our recommendations, but I just want, like, like, for instance, a name was named. I don't, I don't know who that person is either. But I, if we can, at least for some type of respect with Francis Grice, she, she was the, the civil rights movement of desegregation in this district, in this building, not the way it is now, but just here in San Bernardino. So for those that do not know who Francis Grice is, please read up, search her name, San Bernardino. You will really understand the type of work she did for our school district.
Thank you very much. That takes us to, oh, Ms. Scott?
I'd like to have the bio student name too.
Yes, you may. That brings us to nine point two, Cal State University San Bernardino Latino Education Advocacy Days.
I brought this forward. This is something that we've sponsored previously.
Hold on a second.
Oh, sorry.
Scott, your light was on. Was it for this item?
It was. Okay, go ahead. But I'll defer to Ms. Chahuski right now since she did bring it up.
I, I just, we've sponsored it in the past, and I would like to continue to sponsor it. And we, we, we have a lot of participation. A lot of our students attend at no cost, and it's, it's been very powerful.
And how much, what, what sponsorship were you looking at?
I'd like to be a pyramid sponsor.
This is for, so what's the, the lead summit? Did we?
You know, Education Advocacy.
But we, we, didn't we, didn't we agenda this already?
September twenty-seventh. We bought, we, they had one this year. This next one is September.
Let me say this. We historically have contributed more money than this. Yeah.
Not to lead?
It's not the, you said, it's not the Latino teacher leader?
Ten thousand, five to ten thousand.
Yeah.
What did we give last year?
I think we gave five thousand last year.
Before that, we gave ten. That's five.
Yeah, I think we gave five thousand last year. But I think I made that motion last year.
So what is this group? Do they give money to our students?
This is, they, this is Dr. Murillo at, at Cal State, and they do an international summit. And it's at Cal State. It's a whole day of education and learning. And we have a number of our students that attend this, this conference. And, and as well as other educators, community leaders. It, it's very powerful. If you haven't attended, I would recommend going.
And, and our, our educators and students don't pay to participate? Okay. So we have a motion?
A second.
It's been moved to second. Vote, please. Section, oh. Ms. Scott? Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Motion passed. Section ten, ten point one, personnel report.
As presented.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Motion passed, ten point two, approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school plan for student achievement modification. Be resolved, Board Education approves the modified twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school plan for student achievement for the attached schools.
Go move.
I can't.
Been moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Motion carried, ten point three, resolution of district emergency, Harmony Elementary School.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Husky and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion carried, ten point four, request approval of resolution declaring intent to convey public utility easement to Southern California Edison Company.
Come on.
Second.
Ms. Alexander and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please.
Dr. Wyatt, Ms. Sabios?
Motion carried, section eleven, consent items.
Need to pull eleven point four nine?
I need a.
Go move.
Been moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Sabios. Any to pull?
Yes, eleven point four nine, sorry.
Eleven point.
And eleven point fifty for me.
Eleven point fifty? You'll pull eleven point four nine, eleven point fifty. Vote on all others, please.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Motion carried, eleven point four nine, Business and In-Service California Association of Youth Courts Nineteenth Annual Youth Court Summit, positive youth development.
Come on.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Sabios, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion carried, eleven point five zero, ratification of the Business and In-Service, the Sixty-Second Annual Signature Hairdress Ball.
Go move.
I can't.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Sabios. Vote, please. Motion carried, section twelve, twelve point one, reports by, reports and comments by union organizations, twelve point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
No report.
Twelve point two, California School Employees Association.
No report.
Twelve point three, Communication Workers for America.
No report.
Twelve point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Section thirteen, mandated policy provisions, revisions, thirteen point one, board policy differential graduation and competency standards for students with disabilities. Be resolved, the Board Education, Board Policy sixty-one, forty-six dot four, differential graduation and competency standards for students with disabilities. As presented?
I'll move.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Husky. Vote, please. Motion carried, section fourteen, fourteen point one, reports and comments by board members. I'll start with Ms. Chahuski. She's always very, very brief.
Yeah, I will be today. I wanted to say something on the priority pathways. I really think that when, if we're, if we're looking and reviewing them, that we really kind of need to look at the high need professions. It's not that they're not all perform, but if we have to start choosing and airing, I've been thinking about it. And I think like if we look at things like medic, you know, medical field, education, the trade, transportation, things that are, are high need and easy, you know, good job specs in our community, I think that might be helpful. I went to the Lancashire Career Day, and first off, I owe my, my third grade class an apology because I forgot. because I forgot my notes, but they gave me some really good recommendations for things that they think that we should do and some things around their playground, around our, our nutrition program and lunches. They're, they, they, they feel like their playground is rather small and needs more equipment and they're, they had some equipment decisions and things, but they were the cutest class ever and I, I got thank you notes from them today and I'm like, I forgot their notes. And I told them, I said, you need to watch the board meeting because I'm going to talk about you all, but I really want to tell them how much I appreciated my time with them, how wonderful they were, and I will be getting their recommendations to you, Mr. Ariano, so that you will have them to, for your consideration. And then I just wanted to say congratulations to all of our graduates and to our wonderful graduation ceremonies. I was able to attend several and they were, they're just always so beautiful and moving and I'm so proud. I was, you know, talking to different students as they were walking across the stage and all the different things, you know, going in the military, going to work, going in the trades, going to so many different colleges, Berkeley and, and Cal Baptist and, you know, Valley and Cal State and UC San Diego, a lot of kids at UC Irvine, I got to go zot, 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 a lot for my daughter. So I just want to say congratulations to everybody and, and to our teachers and our administrators, our staff, have a really restful summer. Because, you know, we're going to hit the ground running next year, so we hope that, I hope that they have a wonderful summer vacation and that everybody gets a little bit of break while, while school's off this summer, including you, Mr. Ariano. I hope you're going to take a vacation or something because we need you fresh and refreshed for the next year and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
I'm real proud of Ms. Husky, first of all, so I'll take her extra two minutes, but I'll try to do a bullet point like you as well, Ms. Husky, but just want to start off chronological order since our last meeting. Law enforcement recognition dinner, first of all, colleagues, we were well represented by the board as well as the district and congratulations to Officer Joshua Echeverria, which is even more important. He was an alumni, a graduate from Royal Valley High School, so talk about grow our own, great story, and I'll talk a little bit about him at the end of my comments as well. He was at another event. Electrical pathway graduation over at San Bernardino High School, again, we are very well represented. Four of us were over there with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, which I think is huge because it gives our students a direct pathway into the apprenticeship program right out of high school, so learn how they earn, kind of their saying, and had a ton of kids there and that was just a really great event and what we're looking for in regards to our career pathways. Bunch of graduations, so Middle College High, Virtual Academy, Cajon High School, were just a few and a lot of great events, a lot of good things happening with our kids and gosh, just listening to some of their stories from our, what do you call, valedictorians, salutatorians, just overly impressive, overly impressive, what our kids do in this city. I just, again, every year I'm impressed by them and again, another year just blown away by their achievements and just outstanding job to them. And then the last event was this past weekend where we had the inaugural event with the Arrowhead United Way and it was called the Brave Event, I believe, and providing services to our veterans, specifically homeless veterans as well, and that was just really, really nice event. I'll be honest, I was just asked to go cook for our veterans and next thing I know it was a huge event and just a really, really honor to our vets and also our active personnel as well and Officer Echeverria was there again with a number of our school police and our Explorer Scouts, so Chief, they did an amazing job as always. They're there from the very beginning to the very end. So it was a long day and didn't even show a little bit of hesitation to get the job done the entire day, so hats off to them and again, representing San Bernardino City Unified School District in a very dignified and honorable way. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt, Ms. Sabios?
Also just want to say once again, congratulations to all the graduates and really want to, you know, give a big thank you and shout out, shout out to all of the different high schools and administrators and executive cabinet and, you know, superintendent and, you know, other board members. It's, 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 it's a lot of events in a very short period of time and so, you know, it can really take its toll sometimes. I know myself, I was under, under the weather for this past weekend and so, but, you know, every year I've had the opportunity to tend at, at the very least, minimum one graduation, if not more, every, every, every year since I've been on the board and each year it's really, really amazing as it's been shared, you know, to hear students' stories and yeah, it's always nice. It's, it's always really a treat for me personally. So, so congratulations to all of us and thank you to everybody out there for, you know, making, making this happen. This is a huge accomplishment for students and their families and so it's a really special moment. I want to say thank you, President Tillman, for your responsiveness and your leadership. I also want to thank, you know, just, just the board in general for the conversation earlier. It was a really good conversation and this, you know, conversations like that really fill me. We're, we're having honest discussions and even though we may not agree sometimes on certain things, the fact that we just, you know, speak and listen, you know, and share our thoughts, our perspectives, I think, I, for me, I, I feel very heard and, you know, supported and I just want to really extend, you know, my, my deep gratitude around, you know, there's, they're tough conversations sometimes and so, anyway, so thank you so much. And let's see. Yeah, and, and, you know, again, can't, can't say enough about the, I think, I think I have, but I want, want to mention again, the pathways, right, and especially if we're going to be moving in that direction, let's make sure that we, that we are well informed and we have a plan and we support, you know, individuals and different programs out there. Other than that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Ms. Grande?
I was asleep, I think. I'm waking up right now. I just can't believe it. I was elected in the fall of '21 and '22 went by like a blur and then this past one, this was '23, so this is '24. That means two and a half years I've been here already. I can't believe it how fast it's gone. I'm really behind on my karaoke, just so you know, but I'm going to make up for it this summer. And Rami's report brought, brought it up to me. I keep wondering, how do we train our principals at dual language sites? What do we do to recognize our principals at our dual language sites and if not much, can we offer more conferences and professional development for not just the principals though, for any interested staff that's on that site, teachers and office personnel and support staff? I visited Anton and I was impressed and, and, and got an idea for them to, that they could do more is because it says seemed like there were just a, a small percentage of the people that were really excited about it and it's almost like we have to market it to the whole entire school because it's like not everybody knows what's going on or that they are dual, that what a big deal it is and so I hear some disparaging remarks like, oh, all principal cares about is dual language. And, you know, we all know that's not true, but, but there's a perception like that, even if it's just from the janitor or an office staff, then, then we, we want to make sure and, and make sure it's all about, you know, love and teamwork throughout the whole school. And so that, that, I made a mental note and then also would like to get a list of all the dual language sites so I can visit next year. I'm going to make that my, my thing. You know, you all, you already know I do special education classrooms and, and I took on ICEC because remember I was a high school dropout and I, I don't share this too often. I was also a beauty school dropout. I did try beauty school for a while and it had, once it got to that math part with the science and the chemicals, I was out of there, but I do pretty good. I do my own hair now, so I'm, I got pretty good. So anyway, I do want to, he said, I, me too. That's what he said, he does his own hair, when you get your hair clippers over it like that. So I just want to thank all of you, these wonderful relationships that, that I have made this year and, and gosh, I, I don't know, I just, my heart gets really, really full and, and Abigail just gets more beautiful every time I look at her over here. Look, look, look at, I feel like she's doing it for me. Do you feel like that? No? But, but I just want to thank you all. Every time I come here, it's like I have a feast, you know, feast over there and a feast for the eyes and I, I go home excited. It takes me an hour to get to sleep, so thank you. I honor you and I, I for one would like to name a building after Danny Tillman. Not what, not sure which one, but, you know, one, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Now, Ms. Grande, just to, just to correct you though, you haven't been on the board two and a half years.
I haven't. Feels that way.
It's been a year and seven months.
Oh, see, feels like three. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Medina?
I even fixed my hair. I was like, what? Oh my goodness. Okay, well, I, 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 you know, that's why I love the board. I mean, because we, we, like you mentioned earlier, Ms. Sabios, we, there's issues that we don't necessarily agree on everything, but we're able to have these conversations, these candid conversations and really work with what we, what we feel our students are at our top, our top priority and how we feel that we need to achieve those goals. I mean, it really, we are working in that direction. I also wanted to say congratulations and how much I appreciate, I know we mentioned at the last board meeting, but I can't say it enough, for our, our student school board members. You know, Crystal Scott, our board member, Crystal Scott, who's here, you know, who has been an amazing and she's always, when we're in, you know, different events, she's there and you have been consistent and, and I can see a great leader in yourself and, and I look forward to maybe you coming back and, and being one of our school board members in the future, so I'm really excited for your future and, and thank you for serving. So I just wanted to mention that, on your service. I did meet with several students and she did mention earlier with regards to the Wellness Center, so I met with students, with ICUC students from San Bernardino High School, San Gregorio High School, Pacific High School, I mean, yes, Royal Valley High School, and the students, one of the things is that they were mentioning is that they felt although there are wellness programs within their sites, they're not fully receiving it. They're not, it's not really marketed as it should be. Maybe it is marketed to a certain extent, so, so maybe if there's a way for when we start this new school year for 2024, 25, really marketing and, and showing it. We have our buildings that are painted beautifully and maybe there's ways to incorporate mental health and, and where this location may be, if it's a room within a campus, if it's some type of center or resource. We want to make sure that they're, they're receiving that information and that they can't say, well, I didn't know that there was this program. They know that there's this program offered for them because that is, that is one of their priorities, one of their top priorities. And another thing that I do feel like we can support is, it's AB 27, 27, 24, which is done by Assembly Member Eloise Gomez Reyes, and this is basically a voter outreach in our high schools that they would, we would have like designees at each of our sites and so this, if, right now it's, I believe it's moved to the Senate, would be a great resolution if we could try to support. It is supporting our students in voter registration and voter outreach, so if, maybe we can have this as a, on the next board agenda in possibly passing a resolution like this for our, at our next board meeting, at least to have the conversation. And this is AB 27, 24. And that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Mrs. Alexander?
Thank you. I too would also like to congratulate all the graduates, our, our student board members and, Crystal, you're here and even your colleagues, the four of you are doing great and want to wish you the best of luck and just can keep doing what you're doing, stay vigilant, stay aware of what's happening in your community and we look forward to you coming back. So best of luck in college and everything else that you're going to do. Also like to congratulate all the graduates, just like my colleagues, attended several graduations. It was very interesting and good, you know, in terms of seeing the students and the scholars doing great things and just being together was awesome as well. I also would like to say thank you to the staff members that helped put on the graduation because it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort and just the preparation, making sure that communications is on point with pictures and just our overall social media engagement, so thank you for that and then all the staff members at each one of the high school sites. I know that, you know, there's been, you know, I know Superintendent Ariano has been in contact with all the principals and said, thank you on behalf of the board and just letting them know that we really appreciate what they did in terms of just making sure that the high school students that were graduating, they were prepared, they were ready, didn't we have any interesting scenarios, maybe, not a lot. There might have been a couple and those scenarios that were outstanding or just it went against our core values. I know that the superintendent, you're going to be following up with those particular sites, so I want to just make, let the community know that, you know, we are definitely addressing any concerns that have been raised related to lack of equity or just going against our core values, but again, thank you for the leadership because for the most part, everything went well, was smooth and those incidents that did happen, I know they'll be addressed accordingly. And then in addition to that, I wanted to talk about a couple other things. So the time is point and count, or point and time count just recently came out for the County of San Bernardino and I think it's important for us to get a report from our department on what we're doing for the foster youth and homeless, just to see, you know, how we're addressing that because when I looked at the different cities within the LA Empire, I think our numbers are growing, but I know we have a department, I know we're doing great things, it's just that we need to present to the community what we're doing. So I'd like that documented, that would like for us to get a presentation. In addition to that, the pathway program, I know that there was some mystery about if that's being deleted, I guess, the, for Curtis Middle School, so if we can get clarity on what's happening there and get, get that addressed so we can make sure that the right narrative is being shared. And then I also attended the state of the city and I thought that was good and I know that Superintendent Ariano, you're going to be attending one of the city council meetings and one thing that came out of the state of the city, it was great. Actually, I ran from the graduation to the state of the city and they did highlight the school district, however, I also saw that there was an opportunity, maybe if we could revisit our governing body between the city and the school district. Many of our school board members are also sitting with the council and I know that that's part of the discussion, but I think there's other opportunities to probably build that bridge and that's it. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just two things I did forget. Forgot to give Ms. Alexander a thank you because she covered for me at San Bernardino High School and I had to work really late Friday night and she said, Scott, you're supposed to speak. I said, oh my gosh, I can't get out of here, so thank you, Ms. Alexander. And then a young lady on Saturday, I forgot to mention her, our wonderful student at Cajon, she's going to be a senior next year, but Ms. Juliana Avila, I said I'd give her a shout out. She was amazing as well and just super excited. I mean, great kid, just like what we see in all our kids and it's just, it was emotionally overwhelming just to be with her. She spent, gosh, Chief, how long did she stay with us? Couple hours, two, three hours with us, right, Ms. Alexander? And just 4.5 GPA, she runs cross-country track, plays soccer, she plays the flute and just a balanced kid and going to go a long way in life and I want to say hello to her and her family and thank you again for volunteer time. So thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Mr. Ariano?
Thank you. Just very quick, I want to just start off by saying a big thank you to Kimber and Will on a great presentation and as it was said, yeah, very, very well done. Want to thank Terry and Trias and everybody in your department for your presentation on the budget today. It's amazing how you guys can take very complex issues and make them very understandable for us, so thank you very much. And I just want to say congratulations and thank you to Crystal for everything she's done. I will always remember her as being the very first student I met as superintendent when I was here in the district. She was the first brave student to walk up to me and said, hi, my name is Crystal. Who are you? And ever since then, you know, we, we've been friends and I also want to recognize her mom, who's been very supportive and been here to support not only Crystal but the district, so thank you, Mom, for all you do and Crystal, we're looking forward to hearing about your life and, and I, I want to double up on what Abigail said. We'd love to see you come back to be a board member someday. I think you would be great, so good luck to everything that you do moving forward. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then I too, I want to once again congratulate all the 2024 graduates across the district. We're very proud of all of our students. We will always be here for you if you need support after you have graduated from us, but we're very confident that you're going to thrive in school. But we're very confident that you're going to thrive in school, in career and/or life as you move forward. So congratulations to all the families. Thank you to all the high school staff and principals and support staff that put together all these ceremonies because it takes a great deal of planning and, and intricate planning. So thank you. And I do want to echo what Ms. Alexander said. We have, we are having and have had after action reviews of our ceremonies. I have asked our principals to reflect and notate all the great things that happened, but also to notate some of the things that maybe we didn't see coming, that maybe we should see coming next year. So we will be addressing and have addressed a couple of issues that I noticed that have come to my attention. And we will very happily be addressing them and making sure that next year, all of our ceremonies meet all of our core values and our expectations. So thank you to all our high schools for great work. If you can show me the first picture, it was mentioned today. Congratulations to Officer Joshua Cheveria, who was recognized for his outstanding service at the 46th Annual Law Enforcement Dinner put on by the San Bernardino Chamber of Commerce. And as was said, he is in the Royal Valley High School. So we're very proud of Officer Cheveria and thank you, Chief Paulino, for all the leadership that you've provided him. I know he's very grateful for, for your leadership. Next picture? And I want to give out shout out to our campus security officers. Today was day two of their two-day training. Again, Chief Paulino puts on for our staff. And I had the opportunity to thank them for all their great work this year and all their empathy and connection building that they have to kids. I thank them for the anticipation of some of the data that we think we're going to see where there's some reduction in expulsions, reductions in suspensions. We believe that those connections that they are making are, are making a difference. So I know today's training was about trauma-informed strategies and making sure, I know the message was, make sure you love our kids. Because no matter what they do, no matter what bad choices they make, they're not bad kids. They just needed a moment of clarity. And so we want to make sure that we love our kids. But I wanted to thank them on behalf of the board and it was a great event. So thank you, Chief Paulino, for your leadership. And I know up here, Scott, Mr. Tillman and I are very competitive with each other. And we give each other a lot of pressure when we're asked to throw out the first pitch at any stadium. And one of the first, I think first months I was here, Danny said to me, don't embarrass us and bounce it. I said, okay. Well, the same goes to you. So I wanted proof that Mr. Tillman didn't bounce the first pitch. So I wanted to enter this into evidence as proof that Mr. Tillman did us proud. So Mr. Tillman was money. So we're very proud of him, very proud of him. And I want to end tonight by wishing my daughter Erin, today is her 24th birthday. And I know she's watching and I just want to tell her that I'm very proud of her and that I love her. And we will be celebrating her birthday this weekend. So happy birthday, sweetheart. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina?
And I just, and I totally, and I was really excited. My son had his baby today, this morning. My, my little son, I'm a grandma, second time around, and I'm really excited. So yeah, I just.
Did your son have the baby? It was, did he?
He had, well, no. Well, he was there to support. He was there to support his wife who had the baby. But you're right. It was, but you know, in my mind, it's, you know, yeah.
I got you. Thank you. Congratulations. And that brings us to section 15, summary of board members' requests.
Good evening. The first request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She requested to use the word enslaved instead of slave in the resolution in recognition of Juneteenth Day. President Tillman requested to look into the medical pathway at Curtis Middle School based on a public comment received this evening. Ms. Rosales Medina requested to know what the starting pay is for students exiting the pharmacy technician program.
You can go ahead and delete that. They mentioned it during the presentation. So it's fine. You don't have to, we don't have to have that.
Thank you. Ms. Chehusky requested an analysis of African-American students' suspension data. President Tillman requested consensus that the board be notified if there are programs in jeopardy of being cut due to lack of enrollment. Mrs. Bayos requested to know what the pathways are and give the community the opportunity to see what we are advertising, to give it the opportunity to either fill it up or get rid of it. She requested that we are well informed and supportive of the pathways. Mrs. Grande requested consensus to have each board member have three names to recommend for the naming of the Welcoming Resource Center. She requested to agendize, agendize the next board meeting and have up to three names for submission. Ms. Chehusky requested to sponsor lead for the 2425 school year for $10,000. Consensus was granted. Ms. Chehusky requested to look at the high needs pathways that could help with employment. Mrs. Grande requested to know how we are training our principals on dual immersion and how we can expand our professional development to other staff who are interested. Ms. Rosales Medina requested to market and showcase our wellness centers across our district. Ms. Rosales Medina discussed about AB 27, 24 voter outreach, requested to have designees at each sites, requesting to have at our next board agenda and possibly support it. I'm checking for board consensus.
For AB to have that on the, as a resolution, as a resolution.
Thank you.
For voter engage, for student voter engagement outreach. And it's in the, it's moving into the Senate, but we can have the whole language in case you want to review it as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Alexander requested to get a report on foster youth and homeless and requested a presentation from that department. Mrs. Alexander requested clarity around Curtis Middle School pathway being deleted. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. And section 16, in memoriam, the board would like to recognize and close the board meeting in memory of Aiden Elias, a 14-year-old eighth grade student who passed away on May 21st. Our condolences go out to his family. Can we get a moment of silence, please? Very much entertaining motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.